And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kathy, if you would do the roll call, please.
Councilmember Zerkin?
She's absent. Excuse.
Councilmember Masters?
Yes.
Councilmember Benson?
President.
Councilmember Bramlett?
Here.
Councilmember Poots?
Here.
Councilmember Haight?
Here.
And Mayor Fisher?
Here. Amendments to the agenda. At this time, we have none. Public hearing? There is no public hearing tonight. Next, we will move to presentations. First, we have a representative here from the Hood River County Library District. And I'm sorry, I didn't know your name.
It's a double name. My parents are from Texas. It's Mary Epple, and the last name is Foley.
Foley, okay. Thank you.
Do I come over here?
Sure, go ahead and go to your podium.
Well, my name is Mary Epple Foley, and I'm with the Hood River County Library District. And we also have another member here, Heather Staton. And please interrupt me at any time if you have any questions. We're here partly because of the intergovernmental agreement that we would like to get signed between your city and our district. Through the years, we've had an agreement where the the City of Cascade Locks has provided the space and the electric utilities and the Wi-Fi for the library, and the library has provided the staff and the services and all the library equipment for the library. And in addition, you guys have been paid $2,000 a year for extra hours toward operations, which went toward four extra hours for the library when it was open. And so that's agreement, and this intergovernmental agreement is just kind of a formalization of what we've been doing for many years. Does anyone have any questions? Okay. I'd also like to bring you up to date on what's going on with the library currently, especially with your library, with the branch. This winter and spring, Jada Gittinger and Rachel Fox, who many of you know, spent many hours leading your collection and getting it all straightened up and ready for when the library reopens. We also have a new computer system. It's a new group consortium called Sage. There will be almost 70 libraries in that consortium, so everyone in Hood River County will have access to many more books. And that includes some university libraries and hospital library, I believe, and community college libraries. We're really pretty excited about this new Sage agreement, because it will give a lot of extra materials to everyone. The first summer program for Cascade Locks is Little Bugs Big World. It's with the Dragon Puppets, and it's scheduled for July 13th. And we've got two additional children's programs on July 20th and August 3rd. We are very happy about receiving enough money in donations and grants to reopen all the libraries in July, four months before the tax funds will be available. And this will be no tax fund. Money will be spent. It will be the money we've gotten from grants and from just money-raising funds by the foundation and the friends. Heather's going to talk to you in a minute about one of those activities. Also, we have hired a new library director. We just hired him. His name is Fuzzy Nelson. He's born Oregonian from Blenclaw, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, Oregon. He's been working at the North Bend Library as an assistant director. He has two master's degrees, one in library science and one in public administration, and an undergraduate degree in philosophy, which somehow has a library sound to it as well. We were impressed with his credentials and applications before we met him. We were even more impressed when we met him in person. And everybody raved about him, that he worked for and worked with, and the people from the state library that we talked. So we feel lucky to have him. He's agreed to be present at the Feast of Words dessert fundraiser at the Hood River Main Library on May 14th, and Heather will just speak a couple of minutes about the details on that. Thank you.
Okay. Mary, while you're up there, I just wanted to mention to you that currently our budget committee
Mm-hmm.
has looked at our budget, and our Parks and Recreation Program was behind and needed money. And there's a recommendation, it hasn't been finalized yet, but there's been a recommendation that the $2,000 that was going to be given to the library actually go to our Parks and Rec this year. So I just wanted to let you know that that $2,000 might not be there. It hasn't been finalized, but I just wanted to let you know.
Okay. And you can, I'm not sure how it would work best with the IGA. You could send it back, and we could change it, and then go through the signing process?
Yeah, we could probably just scratch it out and initial it
Okay.
for, as far as the legal.
Okay.
But I just wanted you to be aware, it's not finalized. It hasn't been through the council yet, but it has went from the budget committee.
Well, of course, I mean, we would love to have the $2,000, because like all local governments, we're a little strapped ourselves. But I do understand if it turns out you just let it out.
Sure.
Certainly Parks and Recs is also a good cause, but, so thank you for letting me know.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Oh, you know, and I just wanted to tell you about the dinner, I mean, the dinner, not dinner, the fundraiser that the Library Foundation is doing. And I hopefully sent everyone an email. It's on May 14th, the next Saturday, and you're all invited. Complimentary. We would love you to get to know our new library director, especially, we think that partnerships between other local government agencies and our library district are really important, so we'd be glad to have you.
Okay, thank you. Did anyone from the council have a question of Mary? Of anything? Kathy?
Are there any other IGA agreements that the library district's entering into other than with Cascade Locks?
Yes. We've got, we've got two agreeing with the county, with the county, with Hood River County. Because the district, you know, the library is now a separate district from the county. So we have some going with them. We both have a branch library agreement with Hart Gale also, similar to yours. So, and I did want to say that the $2,000, you will have library service. We really are interested in providing library service to our branches, so it's just, it's nice to have, but you will have your library service.
Okay. Anyone else from the council have a question? Tiffany?
Do we know what that library service is going to look like?
No, we haven't, maybe I should get back here. We haven't gotten down to the nuts and bolts of the hours open and exactly how many people are going to be hired. We have a budget, but it's kind of a placemaker budget. But the new director's going to come on on June 1st, and he'll be looking at that, because those decisions will be his decisions, because we're a policymaking board, not not the actual implementation, so he will be making those decisions. I assume there may be some cuts, but I don't, some cut, but not to the extent that we're, I think, we're looking at maybe 40 hours as opposed to 65 in Hood River. Was that right? And I guess your cut won't be near the, you're in that proportion, I don't think. But the branch service is so great for kids, and it's so great for older people that can't come down. We really do feel it's important. But we won't, we haven't made a final decision. We're waiting to discuss all that with the director. Are there any other questions?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary. The next presentation is Kayla Corren from the Tourism Committee.
Hello. I'm Kayla, Secretary of Tourism Committee. I gave you guys all this sheet, so like a former outline of our governor conference. Me and Lorraine Massey went to the Governor's Conference in Eugene, Oregon in April, and it was a lot of fun, very exciting. And a couple of things I wanted to read you guys before I get into that. In 2003, Oregon faced one of its highest unemployment rates in history. The Oregon Tourism Investment Control Act was signed into law, which made tourism and hospitality a pillar of Oregon's economy by reinvesting up 1% of lodging revenue back into tourism development and marketing. For every $1 spent on state marketing, it resulted in $193 in visitor spending. For every $1 spent on state marketing, that results in $8 in state and local tax revenue. 21 million overnight visitors to Oregon in 2009, with an average stay of four nights. Visitor spending reached more than $8 billion in 2010, generating $2 billion in employee earnings. Tourism is now one of the three largest industries for employment in rural counties. We learned a lot about the state statistics and things like that, that has been going on with Travel Oregon and State of Oregon and things like that. And it was very interesting to me and Lorraine. We learned a lot. There was, you know, the Pendleton Roundup. There was bike tour companies from Portland. It was very interesting. So a couple of things, this is very extensive, as you can see, I just wanted to add a couple of things. The beautification project, Clean Up Your City Make Presentable to the World, was, a lot of the presenters were talking about that, that that's very important, and all of you understand that, obviously. Constantly move towards the future. Pick your strengths and run with them. Advertise unique and extraordinary. There's a lot of places in Oregon that do a lot of the same things, biking, hiking, you know, windsurfing, sailing, all that stuff. Not many of the sailing. That's why we're really trying to step up that and advertise that mostly. Really, the recreation is where we're going. Keep small-town, local feeling. A lot of community members are really strong about this already, but it appeals to people who are trying to get out of this city. And then, one of the biggest things that I felt was most important was the honest review workshops after all projects. I think that's one thing we really need to work on, is that every time we have an event, especially this new, we need to really talk about what happened that we thought was good and what happened that we thought wasn't necessarily. And a lot of that's planning and just, you know, getting better for the next year. Market your exciting events. Make it something people will actually want to come to. That's pretty selfish, so I don't know. Educate the locals. Down under the keep it fresh part is one thing I thought, I felt pretty strong about, and I said Cascade Locks IQ test. Actually, the Pendleton Roundup, they have, you know, pretty much a reputation for being a country town. And the lady, the executive director of the chamber, was wanting to appeal to a larger demographic. So she was, she actually put together a Pendleton IQ test and put it into a age, like a grade school curriculum. And so they were teaching the kids, you know, the proper story to tell about their town, which I thought was pretty interesting, so. And the bicycle tourism was actually the last day, and I can't speak for Lorraine, but I personally felt that that was the most important one, considering the climb trail that we're doing. And a lot of the things they were talking about was make your town bike-friendly, collaborative efforts with the local businesses and community members, and to stress that it's a healthy, family-friendly activity. We are a family-friendly town, and I think that, you know, with Eagle Creek Trail, it's very family-friendly. It's, you know, bikeable, things like that, so. Yeah, we had, the Portland Bike Tours owner was there, and he said that the Columbia River Gorge Tour was his second best seller, and he comes right through Cascade Locks, so. So, do we have any questions? Sorry, I kind of blew you through that. I get everything in.
Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is comments from the general public. If anyone cares to comment from the general public, we'll, all people will address the council as a whole. You will do so with respect to everyone on the council. When you come to the podium, you will state your name, the reason why you're speaking to the council. If you're here with a group to make a comment, you need to pick a person to represent that group, so that only one person speaks on that item. When each person has spoken, at the end of public comment, it will be closed, and then it will be the council's turn to speak on the matter. There will be no interruptions from the public when council is discussing a matter. So at this time, I open it to public comment for anything that isn't on the agenda. Donna Moore?
I'm Donna Moore, Chairman of the Tourism Committee, and I just want to give a small report on the garage sale days. It was highly successful. I'd like to thank everybody who had a part in having a garage sale or helping to get it going. People said there wasn't quite as, they didn't think there were quite as many people as there had been in the past, and we thought maybe being right at the end of the month, you know, finances weren't there and that, so we're thinking about maybe changing the day, changing the week when we do it. But it was a success. There were a lot of good garage sales, and I saw trucks full of things driving out of town, so I just wanted to report that it went well.
Thank you. Would anyone else from the public like to make a comment?
Good evening. Rob Rossdorf, city resident. I wanted to point out that this spring, when you go drive through Cascade Locks, you go past the cemetery in the city hall and the mall, the plantings and whatnot in all the public areas are absolutely gorgeous this year. There's one place, though, that seems to have been missed, and I'm not sure just why. It's the richest thing that you see when you come into town, and there's absolutely nothing out there, and that's the fire station. And I would hope that we take care of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Seeing none, we will go on to discussion, declaration of potential conflicts of interest. Seeing none, we will continue to consent agenda. Consent agenda may be approved in its entirety in a single motion. Items are considered to be routine. Any council member can make a motion to remove any item from their consent agenda for individual discussion. Item A, approval of the minutes of April 25th, 2011 council meeting. Item B, approval of the minutes from the April 11th, 2011 council meeting. Ratification of bills in the amount of $186,829.29. Is there any discussion on these items? Lance?
I wasn't, maybe I missed it before the meeting started, but there's a revised agenda on my table that also mentions the under consent agenda approval, $4,000.
Oh, you're right. I have another one. I missed that. Okay, two different ones. Let me add that one in. The approval of $4,030.50 to Pacific Crest Imprint for brochures. So you're right, Lance. I had two different ones.
And I mean, now that you've said that, I'd like to request that that be pulled for discussion.
Okay. So, items A, B, and C, is there a motion? Yes, Lance?
We approve the consent agenda, including items A, B, and C.
It's been moved and seconded to approve items A, B, and C? All those in?
I have a question.
Oh, Tiffany?
On the April 11th minutes, there was an amendment to the minutes. I've never seen it done this way before. Is there a reason why it's set off to the end of the minutes instead of just being included where it's supposed to be, Kathy?
Well, normally when there is an amendment to the minutes, it usually is just noted on the front, unless it's like redone and the minutes that came in the packet. I mean, I think, although basically there was an insert, insert part, I think the rest of it was the same, so I can insert that.
Okay. I'd like to see it done that way, have it inserted where it's supposed to be instead of at the end.
Okay. So that was
For the April 11th minutes, yeah. So I don't know if you need an amendment or just, what do you?
Can you just do that, Kathy? Or do we need to only approve A and C?
Well, you can approve A, B, and C. It's in the minutes to make that correction, so.
Okay. So.
I mean, if you'd rather, Lance can amend his motion to save this correction like before having the
I'm fine with my motion. Someone else can take it on if they want to.
Okay.
I'd like to amend the motion to include the amendment in its proper place in the minutes of the April 11th, excuse me, council meeting.
I think that
I think, yeah, I don't think we can, yeah, he has to make the amendment, so if.
How about this? I'll withdraw my motion. Take it away.
And then, who seconded it?
Doesn't matter. I've withdrawn it. Make your motion.
Okay, so I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, A, B, and C, with the amendment that the amendments of the April 11th meeting, which is beyond the consent agenda, that the amendment be put in its proper place in the minutes.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve A, B, and C, and to put the additional information in the correct place on B. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes? Okay, so we will move on to, did you have any comment, Lance?
I think everything was in the minutes. I don't see a need to, it almost seems like we're just harassing Kathy that, I mean, it's, we're backlogged on these minutes, so I think if everything that we wanted in there is in there, whether it's the proper place or not, it doesn't matter to me. That's my comment. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. We will move on to the approval of $4,030.50 to Pacific Crest Imprint for brochures. It's open to discussion.
We need an explanation first. I mean, this is not in our packet. This is added, so an explanation would be good.
Richard?
I don't have one, I'm sorry.
Well, at your table was the Tourism Committee minutes. And I think Chair, Secretary Kayla here, if I could come up and explain it to the council.
It's on the first page, page eight, the brochures.
Basically, and in a nutshell, we normally order our brochures quarterly or whenever we run out, and we took the amount that we ordered last year, and we decided to order them all at once, because we saved thousands of dollars doing it that way. So that's the reason that it has to come before you, because it's over the spending limit amount. So the paper that you have from Pacific Crest Imprint, if you turn your packet all the way over, on the back of it shows you how many we've ordered in the past, and how much it cost us, and then how much savings we'll have by ordering them all at once. And I did a presentation and explained to you guys that we just joined, there's eight welcome centers in Oregon, and we just joined to send them brochures, and then we're also placing the brochure at the airport. I talked to the people who handle that, and they said that they get requests all the time for people at the airport who want brochures on the gorge. And that's, the first mailing that we have to send them is 5,000 brochures, and then all through the summer, we'll be sending them more brochures. So we're preparing for that.
So you're within your budget right now on?
We are. We have money budgeted for the brochures.
I've moved to approve the amount of $4,030.50 to Pacific Crest Imprint for brochures.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the amount of $4,030.50 to Pacific Crest Imprint for brochures. All those in favor?
We have a discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Discussion?
Is it, is it true that this is a company that's owned by a member of the Tourism Committee?
No, that is not true.
That's not true. That's all. So, or, this is a standard brochure that we've had in the past, so nothing new.
No, we're making a few changes to it. It's our business. We have to take off, and we're adding a little bit to the map, and so it's pretty standard. We're making a few changes.
It'll be, the trail map's going to be added, because they cost, it'll be a perforated panel, so it'll look like this, and I'll just be able to tear off. So we don't have to stubble anymore, so.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll take it to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion passes?
I'd like to say why.
Go ahead.
There's, I don't want to get into detail and stuff, but there's, there's been some, some reports on our packets and through email, there's some turmoil on the Tourism Committee. And I'm not sure exactly what that is, and I have a hard time approving the expenditures when, there's some questions about what's happening, so. For me, I just, I feel uncomfortable with that expenditure at this point. That's all. Thank you.
I'll just say, maybe Mr. Masters could come to the Tourism meetings and put me in on it, if you'd know.
Yeah, well, I'll certainly talk to him if there's something I can do.
Thank you. Next, we will go to unfinished business, and there is none.
Why is the, we did have the 911 communications grant. Is there a reason why it's still not on tonight?
Yeah, I took it off. The fire chief's mother is going for an operation, and he is going to be out of town. And we're still in the process of doing the acceptance checklist for the 911 system, so it might even be done by the time we bring it back to the council, so I pulled it.
Have we received the final payment yet? We have not.
No, contacted the county, the council.
And did you find a answer to the question on the maintenance contract, the maintenance?
Yeah, after the five years of warranty period, the system is turned over to the 911 district who maintains it. We only maintain our radios. We don't maintain the towers or the communication equipment other than our own personal radios.
Any other further questions? Seeing none, then we will proceed to new business. First item under new business is the IGA agreement between the City of Cascade Locks and the Hood River County Library. Does, Lance?
I'll make a motion to approve the IGA between the City of Cascade Locks and Hood River County Library District.
No, we need to
Yeah, I know, yeah. I brought up
The motion fails because there's no second.
Right.
Okay. The motion fails because there's no second. Is, bringing this up, do we have discussion on the, on the contract? Tiffany?
Okay. Well, I know, things are, before, previously, we used to have a motion to be able to discuss it. Now, are we changing the way that we're doing things? I mean, or are we going to have discussion before we make the motion?
I make a motion to discuss the contract with, or the IGA between the library district and the City of Cascade Locks.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to discuss the contract It's been moved and seconded to discuss the contract between, uh, the IGA contract between Cascade Locks and Hood River County, uh, libraries district. All of, is there discussion?
Well.
Or...
Now we can discuss.
Now we can discuss it. Uh, Tiffany's first.
Would you pass the motion?
Or what?
No, we don't have, we don't have to pass the motion. Okay, so, um, on page two, obviously, we have to, um, delete the payment part. Um, and I'm not comfortable with it being a five-year duration. I would prefer to, um, do it year to year with maybe two years at the most. We have no idea what this is for, we have no idea what hours we're getting, we have no idea, um, how many days we're getting. You know, I, I just, it, it feels uncomfortable to, um, do that, make a long-term commitment on something that we don't even know what it looks like yet.
Okay. Any further discussion, Lance?
Well, um, I don't think it's obvious that we have to delete the part about two thousand dollars. I think that's something that we can decide, um, um, I don't, I wouldn't want to stake up any discussion, but it seems to me that, you know, there's only one person making a motion, and there's no second to approve it, that, we're not moving forward with it.
Okay.
I mean, is there anyone else on council that approves this or any part of it?
I'll approve it differently, but not the way that it is now.
It's just under discussion right now, Lance, and...
Yeah, I'm just trying to help that discussion, is there, if there's no interest in, in approving it, then why are we discussing it?
Tom?
Well, I'm not interested in proving it as-is, I think that, that's part of, so, that's what the discussion is about, is to take a look at the document, and a- as-is, I, I agree that the two thousand should be, should be off of it, and, um, and I don't know, I'm, I'm agree, this, this is a pretty simple, a pretty simple agreement, but I, are we having our, do lawyers look at, uh, at these agreements, are we?
Um...
Because once we do, we're locked.
I think first, we have to look at and decide whether or not we even are gonna accept it or, or what before we send it to the lawyer, because otherwise, it's just, we need to get it into a final state before we have the lawyer look at it. Don?
I, I would personally like to wait until the new man they hired has set up the schedule and present us with the schedule that we're gonna be signing for personally. I, and it's gonna be, what, when's he gonna be signed up, first part of June?
And my soul, I, I have to agree that, um, we're probably gonna approve this, the majority of this. I think that it would be good for the council to know exactly what services we're gonna get, like you said, how many hours, what's gonna go on, everything like that, so that it's, it's defined within this.
Okay, I, I'll certainly take that back to the board, and the, uh, new director will be on, um, June first, and sometime after that, I'm sure we'll try to get back to you on that.
Okay, so...
Um, yeah, the only thing I was gonna say is that, um, it's, uh, something that fits into both of our, our, um, both the city council and, um, our budget documents, and I'm wondering if we don't even start it till he's on board June first in terms of picking hours, it might be too late in our budget process, um, so.
Uh, I guess we just...
We are going to have a discussion.
And, and, um, to be honest with you, I think that, um, it's very difficult at this stage to say a certain number of hours in, in any of, um, the branches, because it's a brand-new district, we have no expense record, um, from any past years, the first, um, four months are gonna be operating entirely on donations, um, and with so much uncertainty, um, I think it's more likely to build hours as the first fiscal year goes through. I think if we were three years down the road, we would be able to say we guarantee that there's twenty hours a week or whatever it is. I think it's a little difficult at this stage. I would suggest one thing is, uh, a year contract for us is, um, difficult, or, or it's potentially, um, this then ages to you, in that, um, we would be less likely to do facility upgrades or add things to that facility if we thought that every year it was potentially going to disappear as a service branch, so, um, for long-range planning, we want, I think, a longer term.
Okay, thank you. Lance, I mean, Kevin?
Well, there's, there's a few things, um. The, the point of the district was to get the county out of providing library service, because that wasn't what their mission was. And it was, it was to finance it with a different, um, in a different manner. And library service isn't our real role either. But we, um, collect taxes to provide services to our, um, residents. Our residents are gonna be paying a tax to the district to provide this service. We haven't really put a value on what this is actually costing us in utilities, phone, janitorial, space in the building, um, and, and then to agree, additionally, the money that we paid, the additional money we paid was for extra hours. So how do you pay the money in advance? Which hours are the extra hours you're getting, right? So if, 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 once we, they determine the service we're gonna get, at that point, if we want to get extra hours, that would be the point where we would say we have X number of dollars to put towards this to get extra hours. But the idea that we're just going to give these services and utilities and phone and janitorial and rent for the building and, and stuff away is, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't seem right to me. We're, as, as individual residents here, we're financing the library district to provide service. We were promised when we agreed to join the district and the, when the council agreed to join the district in the vote part of it, that we would be providing service here. I, I think I wanna see what that service is before I agree to give anything away.
Lance?
Um, well, I, I agree with Kevin that Cascade Locks has, in the process of the vote, has agreed to make a large contribution, uh, in tax dollars to this, uh, library district. And, um, and I think that was done with the expectation that, um, there would be a library here in Cascade Locks, that library services would be offered. And I also think it was done with the expectation that that library would be housed here, um, uh, in this building, because that's traditionally, um, more Spanish, are the books still in there? Um, I, Cathy, maybe you could tell us, is anyone, or how often people go in there since the library closed?
In that room?
Yeah.
Nobody goes in there.
Oh, okay, so...
We have, we have some things stored in there right now, but it's not a...
The stores are not being used, and the books are being stored there?
The books are there.
Um...
I think the, I think someone from the library's been in cleaning and going through books and stuff, but I don't know.
Well, someone from the library's been doing the maintenance.
I think sorting books, maybe, I don't know what, but, and I don't know when or how often.
Yeah, okay. And I didn't ask you that at the time, so I'm sorry, uh, but it's running out on me, but, so that, I mean, I think that was part of the deal, was the, the facility and, and the, um, the contributions that the city's traditionally made in terms of facilities there, um, was, was part of the plan. So I wonder if there isn't, um, support on council to just delete the, uh, payment portion, although I, I don't have a problem with the payment portion staying in this agreement, but, as, I don't see anything else, I mean, that, that, um, that could keep this from happening, um, within this budget cycle. Essentially, they're agreeing to provide adult children's brain services, um, to Casc- in Cascade Locks, uh, providing staff, providing, or maintaining equipment, and we're agreeing to, um, to provide the space, the utilities and the maintenance of the facility. That's the, that's traditionally how it's been, we're not talking about, um, extra costs, we're not using that for any, any other purpose at this point, so. I just wonder if there isn't, you know, if there isn't support, uh, to get this done tonight.
Kevin?
Um, we already have an agreement that they will provide library services in Cascade Locks. That's not what this agreement accomplishes. We have an agreement that says if they don't provide library services in Cascade Locks, we have the option of withdrawing from the library district. So what are we getting in exchange for signing this document? And I don't see that we're getting anything in return for signing this document. The only thing we're doing is we're agreeing to give away space in a public building, pay for utilities, pay for the phone, pay for the janitorial, uh, and to me, that's not a good deal for the citizens of our town. And, um, I don't support it a bit, and the fact that we don't use, currently use a part of this building that's occupied by books, I, I see, I fail to see how that's even relevant, if the room was empty, I'm sure we'd use it.
Um, I feel that, um, that, and, and I don't think it's the point that, that we don't want the library here. I, I think it's more of a point that we wanna know if we're signing into agreement that we are getting certain amounts of service. And the thing that I see here is, is there is no guarantee of the amount of service. It, it could be ten hours a week, it could be forty hours a week, um, it's, it's vague. And, and I think it needs to be clarified before we can make a honest evaluation to, uh, to tell whether or not, you know, that we can sign this in the best interest of the public of Cascade Locks. So you'll have to wait because we're in council, so, um. Tiffany, did you have your hand up, or did Lance?
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, make a statement on that, that it's better to have a long, a long-term, a long-term commitment. And I would agree, once we know what the commitment is, right now, we're just being asked to, trust me, we'll, we'll take care of it, sort of thing, and I would like to see what it is before. So I think at the first, I think it's gonna at least have to be a year to year until we see what it looks like.
Did you wanna speak now, Lance?
Yeah, I just, it was sort of a follow-up on what Kevin said, I didn't, I'm, I wasn't sure what, um, agreement you're talking about, the guarantees that we'll have library service here in Cascade Locks. And then also, you made a comment about, um, there's an agreement that says we have the right to opt out of it if we're, if we're not happy. So, I don't, I'm not aware of that agreement, so...
That was the, that was the agreement that we signed in order to, that was the understanding we had, the intergovernmental agreement, I think it was, before we opted to sign on to be part of the levy.
Was when Dave Merryweather was here?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that was an intergovern- governmental agreement with the county, which was, is a completely different government entity in the library district. And they no longer, as you pointed out, provide library services in this county. And so that, at the time, and that's how, I thought maybe that's what you're talking about at the time, um, you know, that's what, that's what our legal representation told us, is you can't really have an intergovernmental agreement that says that with a government agency that is relinquishing, um, the, uh, the right to, or the, the responsibility for providing library services. So there's, that's why there's new governmental, intergovernmental agreements being signed, or at least being presented to us tonight. You know, we did, we did get it as part of legislative record that our intent was that there would, that, that we would want to negotiate a way out of it with this library district if it was created. Those were a lot of bets, so I don't, I'm not, I'm not sure that there's anything binding in that. In fact, I, if, maybe this is a big F, but if you agree with what, um, an attorney tells you, um, it's not binding. That's it, thanks.
Kevin?
So then that brings up another question, is by signing this, this new IGA, are we, um, eliminating part of that legislative record where, well, this is the agreement you signed with us, and it says nothing about providing service in Cascade Locks? So, I mean, that's definitely something I do wanna address in here.
Well, it does...
Is that if, if we do enter into an agreement with these folks that we're going to know how many hours we're gonna get, know what we're getting in exchange for the tax dollars that this town's paying, and, and if we can't come to an agreement, then I would expect them to honor the agreement between the county and us when we were convinced to put this on the ballot in Cascade Locks.
Lance?
Um, and just for the record, this is an agreement that will guarantee we get library services in Cascade Locks if you look at recital C.
Yeah, and what does it say? The, what does it say? Doesn't say...
It says the Hood River County Library District agrees to continue branch library services to the city of Cascade Locks.
Yeah, does that, does that mean one hour, does that mean, does that mean, what does that mean?
Kevin?
What I would like is the part about if we don't provide services in Cascade Locks, then Cascade Locks will be allowed to remove itself from the district and not pay the taxes that are being collected to provide library service in Cascade Locks.
Lance?
Well, I, I believe it says, this, the agreement says that they, that library services will be provided in Cascade Locks. So, um, it would be a violation of the agreement not to provide library services in Cascade Locks.
Okay, it, it seems quite clear to me that, that the IGA agreement needs to be refined and detailed with more specific information. So I think at this point, we should, we should table this matter until they have time to address this.
Members from the audience wanted to speak, too.
Hang on.
Um, would the council give us some direction in terms of, um, I think the number of hours that we were conceiving was that we would continue library services at about the same level that we had in the past, which was, well, it was nineteen hours with the additional two thousand dollars, and it would be fifteen hours a week without two thousand extra dollars. Is that, would that be a reasonable, would last, I mean, we just would like to know what, if, if we need to input.
Same as last year. Same as last year.
Tom?
Well, oh, a question on that, before the thing happened, the libraries were all running at a certain level, so I guess my, my question would be to our, for the Hood River Library, I, I think you said that there were gonna be some cutbacks there in what they were, so it, it is, it is not gonna run at the level that it ran, um, when the, when the county was paying for it.
Yeah, it was like sixty-five dollars a week, and we're probably more likely able to afford forty.
So you're cutting down your level, the level of, of what's gonna be going, um...
And we were envisioning that, that the branches, because you have less service anyway, that their level of service would continue very similar to before.
Okay.
The thing is, we haven't, I mean, we can go before the board and discuss this, but we aren't authorized to give a, you know, to give the number of hours tonight.
Um, I'd entertain a motion, then, I guess. Oh, wait.
May I?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Sarah Knight, and I'm a citizen here at Cascade Locks. This isn't the agenda item that I came to discuss, but it's one that I feel very passionately about. The city of Cascade Locks citizens, each and every one of them, have suffered in some way from not having library services here. We're such an isolated, um, community that to receive library services costs is a great deal. If we go to Mont Leonberg, go across the river, it's a minimum of ninety dollars a year to get library services. People can't search for jobs. People can't search for jobs. That library was used, people waited in line before the doors were open. And I don't know if a lot of you know, I've been working in the schools. I just provided 100 hours of volunteer service at Cascade Locks School. And a big part of the discussion was a grieving and a loss for our library. And I would like the council to consider, what is the cost of not having a library? Of not having access to information? This council's assuming that all citizens have access to the internet. That's not true. We have a large population of people here that the only access they have to the internet is through our library. So, I say, I would trust the library partnership, and that any service is better than no service, and the benefits outweigh any minimal or negligible housekeeping costs. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandra?
Sandra Kelly, Cascade Locks. I am a member of the Budget Committee, and I was on the budget that helped decide this. And we felt at the time that we were paying quite an extra hit in order to maintain library service through our tax dollar. And we have a limited funds in our city coffers and a lot of debt to service, and that this money could be better used elsewhere, since we were paying through our tax dollar. I don't think, to the last speaker, that anybody on our council is minimizing the importance of library service. I think everybody thinks it's important. But that nonetheless doesn't justify signing a contract, which in essence, a pig and a polk. Not to be insulting, but it's not telling us what we're getting for our money. What can we expect, what can we expect for, in exchange for this contract? And I think Kevin brought up a really good point. If this contract is signed, it pretty much nullifies any expectations from the contract that you've already signed, which would give you the right to opt out if we're in fact not provided service. So, I would encourage you to hold off until you've provided the information you need to make in order to enter into a contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom?
Exactly, the contract that we did, it was pretty clear to me, the contract we entered to with the county was pretty clear that the library board superseded that, whatever. The county said they would go to back for us to try to get more, if that's what we want to do, but they didn't, but they weren't going to have the authority to do it. The library board has the authority. So, this is going to outweigh that one. Whatever we do here is going to outweigh that one, no matter what, because the district's in. And whatever the board's going to do is what we're going to, is what we're going to live with. Everybody does want a library. I want a library, and I think that's, you know, we've given nothing to them. I'm fine with giving them room to do the things we're doing. I just want to, I want to make sure that our citizens, because things do change on us, and that's, and I want to make sure something's down to contract, contract pretty solid, to make sure that we get some hours, some things going on here. So, that's my issue, is to make sure the citizens get their money's worth out of, down here. Because it's a lot more difficult to get to Hood River and use that library. I think, when I'm up here, I'm not a great library person, but I do go to the library. And historically, as I go to the library, I've said it before, the most important, everybody uses it, but the piece of it that I like seeing is the kids in there. And historically, I've seen kids in there for lots of years, and all the kids that I've seen going in there as little kids, that I see there consistently, that when they grow on up, they're the ones that are doing great in school. So, I see the value, and I really see it with the young people. So, that affects me more than anything, but I want to make sure, I mean, I think it's my responsibility as a councilperson to make sure the citizens get locked into the best deal they can go on. Now, did you say that you could, because I'm in favor, unfortunately, because of budget constraints and all that, our reputation has dropped down, and so, we want to give some money to them. So, I'm in favor of us keeping that money there. But did you say that you could tonight say that you could lock into whatever the hours were?
We cannot, but we would, I think. I mean, it's, the service to the branches, well, for one thing, the board is really committed to service for the branches. That's something that everyone on the board feels strongly about. We realize how important they are. And I'm sorry, I, maybe I shouldn't have thought of this, obviously, but that is something that we had thought we would leave up to the new director. So, I didn't want to state something that I didn't know was going to be, whether it was going to be actually true or not. And, but I think in the back of our minds, there has been the feeling that it would be run along the same as it has in the past. The big hit in hours is going to be taken at the main library, I believe.
That sounds that way.
Yeah.
I feel like if you came up with a number, say it was a guarantee of 15 hours a week or something, and suggested us to take that to our next board meeting, I think we could work on redoing the IGA, incorporating a specific guaranteed minimal level of service.
Okay, Lance?
I would ask for feedback from the council. I think it would be, because there's been some discussion, we do have a history of talking about if community of Cascade Locks is not satisfied with library services, attempting to be removed from the district, I think it would be worthwhile for you to take a look at your expected revenues from tax dollars from Cascade Locks, and take a look at what impact that would have on the library district if those were no longer available. I think it's, I mean, just because there is that history, and it's been brought up again tonight, I think it, I would suggest that you do that. But I also, I would agree that, I mean, I think, I think 15 hours is a week. Is that correct? I mean, I, of course, would like it to be 20. But, and I think as a minimum, maybe setting a minimum of 15 hours and bringing that back next time, I would like to see something like that.
Tom?
I also would like a shorter contract, only because initially, I know, I understand you want something longer, but this is something brand-new coming out. You're bringing in a new person that has their way of how they're going to conduct the library and conduct, you know, how it's going to go. And from our end, if you get for the citizens, and I would rather move it into a little slow with a shorter contract, not to say that, not to say that after a year even, you know, to say, yeah, let's extend this.
Oh, you mean for a year?
Yeah, instead of five years, go after a year. And it's not to say that's what I want all the time, just to say that I want to kind of ease, kind of ease into it, feel a little more comfortable.
A negotiating process, so we're certainly willing.
Kevin?
I think we can have discussion with Mr. Carson, and he can maybe talk to their board as well. I mean, it's going to be a two-sided negotiation, so.
I agree with you.
Hopefully get some dialogue going between our representatives and their board, and obviously, they're here talking to our board, so.
When is your next meeting?
It's not a week to really come around tomorrow.
Your next board meeting is the 23rd, so.
Yours is the 23rd?
Yes.
So, yours is on the 7th? No, today, what's today?
So, we're from tomorrow to 17.
So, if they have a decision, they can put it in the contract and send it back to them.
So, I'm going to call for consensus here that we move to, the board moves to, or not moves, but has a consensus to direct Richard to get in touch with the Hood River County Library Board and discuss the term of the contract, the hours in the contract, and the opt-out of the contract, so that he can get that information and bring it back to us, so that we can.
I'm wondering if there shouldn't be a mediation clause in it as well? I mean, for when? Because I didn't really see, I mean, all the other contracts that we've signed have had a mediation.
An mediation clause?
It does have an opt-out clause, and you can give 180 days to cancel the agreement. And it doesn't, you know, termination doesn't have any explanation, you just do it.
Kevin?
And I also would like to know what the library service would look like without us donating the building utilities, phone, and janitorial. So, we can see what we're, the value we're getting.
Okay.
Like, can we put monetary value on that? Is that what you're?
Value? All right. Call for vote?
Well, I think there's still.
Well, I have a question, after you, I have a question about your consensus.
From our South Citizen, I'm just curious, and maybe somebody here has an answer for me. When the vote occurred to form a library district, it was X amount of money for $100,000 throughout the county. It was a county-wide vote, as I recall. And since this passed, doesn't that obligate every household in the county to X amount of money each year for library services, whether there's a library branch opened here or not? And my point being that if there's no library branch opened here, the citizens here in town are going to end up paying for library services that they wouldn't get. There's something to think about, because I think that's the way that works. There's also another way to look at this. Would you want to be the only town in the county, one of two incorporated towns at that, that don't have library service? Thanks.
Lance?
I wasn't sure what you meant by opt-out clause, because to me, if we opt, I think that kind of goes to what Rob was saying. If we opt out, if we were to opt out of this contract, then that would mean the library branch in Cascade Locks would be closing. We'd no longer be providing the facilities and maintenance, and then be paying taxes.
No, that's part of the opt-out.
And that's, are you talking about creating a whole new structure to this contract by which Cascade Locks as a city would secede from the library district? George, is that what you're asking us?
My understanding that there was an agreement already signed, that's already in effect, that actually says that.
Well, that's an agreement with the county, and the county is no longer providing library services. So, that agreement is in effect with the county, but it doesn't obligate, I mean, since the county's not providing library services and the library district is, there's no agreement that governs this.
I think the agreement was made knowing, knowing there was, that they were not going to provide. I mean, that's what the agreement was made, knowing that.
Yes. Right, right. What George is saying is, there's already an agreement that obligates an opt-out, but there isn't.
Yeah, there isn't.
Unless you want to ignore what the attorney, how the attorney interpreted it, which you could.
Tom?
Excuse me. I personally want the library here, but I don't think the council should sign any document that's not clear and tells us what we're signing. I don't think it's so complicated to get these viewpoints. We bring them back and we sign it. I think everybody is for it. But what I'm against is signing a blank piece of paper. And this is a blank piece of paper. We don't know what we're getting. I think, get it, send it down, we sign it. So, I'm against, I'm for everything we're talking about, except signing a piece of paper that doesn't tell you what you're buying.
So, I have a consensus. I called for a vote.
Clarification on that, because no one has, other than me, I haven't heard anyone say 15 hours would be adequate for this council to approve the agreement. And I think that's one of the big, and people have brought that up, what are we getting? But no one has said what we're asking. So, I think that, I would hope that part of your consensus is that 15 hours is adequate, 20 hours is adequate, or something like that, so that we could give them the information they need, or we could give Mr. Carson the information he needs to put this into an agreement that we can support.
Okay, Lance. My understanding was that they had already said that they were going to give us, basically, the like service that we had before. Okay? And if the like service was 15 hours or 20 hours, that that was what they were going to go back to their board and find out what that was, and if that's what it was, that's what they were going to give us.
So, that is what you're asking?
For their like service, whatever it was before. Because that's what they had mentioned. And I know they can't promise anything here, because they have to talk to their board as well. So, that's the reason why the consensus went out, that we'll have Richard look into this and get that information, and then bring it back to us, and then we'll vote on it again the next time it comes around. We have all this information in this agreement, solidified.
So, you're asking for consensus that like services is what we had before the?
To give Richard the authority to go through these items, and then bring that information back to the board. Okay?
And by these items, you're referring?
The items that I refer to, the term of the contract, hours of the contract, opt-out, and then the value of the contract. And that would be, yes.
Because there is a termination agreement in the contract on page, page three. And I also, what about, I was, what about the $2,000? Do you want that taken out, or do you want it left, so it can be considered further?
Tentatively, right now, it has to be taken out. It hasn't came to a final to the council yet. The Budget Committee approved moving that money. So, I would say tentatively, yes. And that's something that might change in the future. It's just right now, I can't, it's like, it hasn't been finalized. So, does everybody understand the consent?
Yeah, but I want to ask, can I ask for a question back? Okay, this is a termination agreement, but it's not really clear for the termination agreement. Does that mean if we terminate it, we get to get out of paying the county-wide tax? It's not, it's not a very clear, yeah.
Oh, no, it doesn't, no, that's addressed, that is actually just limited to the money in this contract, in the agreement in the contract.
So, that's, yeah. Yeah, and that's what, that's what he's talking about.
Okay.
Maybe we could stop paying for schools too.
That'd be great.
Lance, you shouldn't say things like that. You're a teacher.
Well, based on the services that we're giving. I'll agree with you, counsel.
Okay, so, all those in favor of the consensus vote to direct Richard to get in contact and go through terms of contract, hours of contract, opt-out, and mediation and value of the contract. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Opposed.
Motion passes? Consensus passes, I'm sorry. Thank you for your time. Yeah, you can leave if you want, or you can stay too.
And we'll be back.
Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is a decision on the continuance of the IGA with the Port of Cascade Locks for retention of professional services of Baljanic LLP. At this point, Richard, do you have anything that you'd like to say on this?
Yeah, the Port of Cascade Locks contracts with Baljanic to essentially provide lobby services in Washington DC. We, through an intergovernmental agreement, pay half of that. I've talked about this with the general manager at the port. We're pretty much in agreement that there's no reason to go forward in this contract. It's fairly spendy, it's $72,000, of which we're paying half. And with the disappearance of earmarks, it isn't really, you know, in terms of Congress, it isn't really worth the money anymore. it isn't really worth the money anymore. So, he's recommending, and I'm recommending, that we don't approve the contract, that you don't approve. And our part is an intergovernmental agreement with them to have a contract with Ball Janic, so we're one step away from it.
I would move not to, to not to approve continuing the IGA with the Port of Cascade Locks for the retention of professional services with Ball Janic.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to not continue the contract with Ball Janic. It's open to discussion. Lance?
From Mr. Carson there, so does that mean that the port is discontinuing their contract as well, is that?
That's my understanding, at least that's the recommendation from the port manager. I don't want to back the number.
We haven't acted on it, but I believe what he told us at the last meeting was that the port would probably continue, but maybe at a lesser rate, depending on what we.
Richard? Have you looked at his contract? Can we legally get out of his contract?
Well, it's a contract, we have an intergovernmental agreement with the port, who has a contract with Ball Janic, so we don't have, directly have a contract with Ball Janic, they do.
Oh, okay.
We're just not renewing our intergovernmental agreement with them, and if they decide to continue it at a lesser level, say, the thirty-six thousand that they were paying before, then that's up to them.
So then technically, we're not legally bound if we don't pay anymore, by your understanding?
Yes.
Kevin?
I'd also like to point out that the way this has been funded in the past was just to have the Electoral Department foot the entire bill for this thirty-six thousand dollars, which I feel wouldn't be an appropriate way to go forward in, in funding such a program, unless these people were being used exclusively to lobby on behalf of the Electoral Department, which, as Mr. Carson was saying with the end of earmarks, is probably not a real good investment.
In the past, they did, the money basically got us the South Bank project now, so if the idea was we were going to continue on that road, then it might be worth it, but my understanding is that it's securing money for the continuation of the project is not a very high probability, given the new Congress makeup.
Tom?
Now, part of that was through FEMA, was granted through FEMA, too, so that's, is, does that come fall under the same kind of monies?
It's all congressional appropriation.
Okay, all right.
And that, but now comes out of committees.
Right, yeah.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of discontinuing the, the contract, or the IGA with the Port of Cascade Locks for the retention of professional services of Ball Janic? All those in favor of discontinuing that contract?
Just as a, as a point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Do I do something wrong?
No, I'm just saying, I don't think we have to vote on this. If, if we are deciding not to continue it, then we are discontinuing it, so there doesn't have to be a vote.
I think, I think the point is, Lance, is it probably is still going until we bring it to an end, and so if we don't stop it, it's still in effect.
Well, doesn't it expire, doesn't it expire in July, two thousand?
I know, but what's the sense in paying three thousand dollars a month?
It would help to act on it just on behalf of the port, so they know where you're coming from, maybe legally you don't, because it would, it would make it formality.
Well, it saves us a couple months of money. Kevin?
I think we're going to continue with the current IGA, but I think it does give the, you know, we've made a decision, and the port's going to be able to recognize our decision that we've acted not to renew this. I think it makes it a lot cleaner and a lot more certain to them, so I would, I would prefer that we went ahead and acted.
We are obligated to pay it through the end of June.
Oh, we are obligated?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So, we just will, so consensus vote to no longer support the?
No, it's, there's actual.
I mean, it's not, sorry, I'm getting confused. Anyway, calling for a vote for, to discontinue the agreement with, the IGA agreement with the Port of Cascade Locks for the retention of Ball Janic. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, at this time, it's a little out of order, and it's not on there, I forgot to have Kathy read a letter that was from our, our new Public Works Superintendent, and I'd like Kathy to read this letter at this time, because I was supposed to have her do it earlier, and it fits into this, so I want the letter to be read ahead of time. So Kathy, could you read the letter at this time, please?
May I, may I, Mayor Fisher, let's read our question, May ninth, two thousand and eleven, from Dave Griffin, Public Works Superintendent. Just some initial thoughts on Cascade Locks Public Works. I thought it might be prudent to not only give you an outline of some initial impressions and needs of Cascade Locks Public Works, but something you can share with City Council tonight as well. After spending two full days with Sheldon Mount last week, I cannot see an area in Public Works, as in water sewer streets, equipment in which there is not some major need. I don't mean this to sound depressing, and it is certainly not a reflection on employees, it is just simply with time systems deteriorate, and the cost to replace, repair, and improve for the benefit of the community continues to rise. I believe that our current employees care a great deal about this community and are striving to do their best, that they're in the mode of fighting fires, or better yet, a reactionary mode. Something breaks, and they run repair it, someone complains, and they try to address it. Maintenance and painting fall by the wayside in this type of mode. I believe it to be a mode that Public Works has operated on in Cascade Locks for a number of years, due to the maintenance evidence, or lack thereof, that is very visible. With that said, here are some initial thoughts on the following streets. There is no sign of street maintenance. I don't mean patching pot holes, which is not maintenance, but reactionary. There is a need for crack sealing, chip seals, actual pavement overlays. These can be done through city-county agreements, city-count agreements, and in-house, or city-city agreements and in-house. In our effort to improve patching around the community, we have already taken the steps to purchase and have delivered sixteen tons of polymer modified asphalt delivered, which can sit until used, and yet creates a permanent patch when compacted. This is far better than investing in numerous trips to try out down hauling two tons per trip of pot mixed asphalt that is below lovable temperature by the time that is returned to Cascade Locks for use. The rental of a crack sealing machine will save the city thousands in road repairs and can be undertaken by a street sweeper. Rental of a street sweeper or inter-agency sweeping agreement could save man-hours and improve overall appearance and safety on the street. Equipment, there are numerous equipment needs. Public Works has no role for street repairs, the dump truck needs tires, Public Works in electrical have no air compressors, which should be a joint purchase, there is no safe means of removing a sewer blockage, as currently a hand rodder and a pressure washer are all that exist. The tapping machine for use on water mains is an antique which cannot be used on modern PDC. The amount of parts needed for day or night WS, I guess, water sewer repairs are inadequate, and a usable inventory needs to be built. Some of these items can be acquired just through wise purchasing, utilizing state surplus, community needs list, and keeping a close watch on equipment sales. Initial funding thoughts, future discussions. Does electrical pay water sewer for use of Public Works purchased equipment and vice versa? Would a joint equipment pool be beneficial? Is tier structuring on water rates an option under the no raise rates ordinance? Tier rates are typically used by municipalities and meeting state water conservation criteria. This elevates the surcharge on large users of water, some localities tie it to sewer as well. SDC charges are not being maximized, not only for water sewer, but for street lighting and storm. Could certain areas of Cascade Locks be targeted for community development block grants due to the needs or income levels in that specific area of the city? Does DEQ require mandatory sewer hookup if the customer is with one hundred foot of a sewer main regardless of septic tank condition? Does DHS require septic tank abandonment within one hundred feet of a public water main? The largest problem with the waste water treatment plant seems to stem from sediment collection, and which affects the total suspended solids. Has smoke testing ever been done to determine if storm drains are tight into the sanitary sewer? To the knowledge of the crew, a complete jet cleaning of the collection system has never taken place. This type of cleaning could show problem areas that with repair would eliminate sediment. The permit is good through twelve thirty-one twelve, prior to that time, the city may have the ways and means to upgrade the waste water treatment plant, so operational costs go down, or it may wish to assume waste water treatment plant operations on its own, to increase Public Works personnel and save contractual costs. I do not believe the council should consider the OMI contract for longer than one year, and should include an out clause with ninety days notice from the city. In-house initial design will begin on Tuesday for the storm water problem at Lakeside and Highway Thirty. I can see no reason why the storm collection system cannot be designed and built in-house. The new booster pump facility for Heaven United is state of the art, we just need people moving into that area to get it going. The scope of work and the assumptions being made by Wallace Engineering for CIP planning gives cause to raise concern. It is hoped some of these can be addressed this week. I have not totally delved into the two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve budget yet, but would encourage all the council and Budget Committee to remember that it takes not only commitment, but dollars to run the Public Works Department. It is cheaper to maintain infrastructure than to replace it, also that your Public Works Department has not been operating to effectively maintain your infrastructure, and that dollars not spent in the previous budget should not be reason to remove or lessen those funds in the future budget. Remember, this is only an initial snapshot, I don't want anyone overwhelmed by needed projects or costs, but I look forward to working with all you to improve Cascade Locks Public Works for the benefit of all the citizens of the community.
Are we going to get a copy of that?
Sure. Yeah, Lance.
Did you say you were going to give everyone a copy of that?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So, I thought Irene Lescara was supposed to save us, and we.
He has, he has, Lance.
He actually is. When he was, he's talking about, well, he was talking about the asphalt mix, by the time they went, picked it up and drove it back, it was no good.
No, I understand, there's a lot of things.
So instead, we brought this other kind of patch in bulk that can sit out back, and it only hardens on compression, it's not, it's not geared here.
No, no, I understand, it's just there's, there's, you're looking at a lot of things, and there's.
And he's also talking about sedimentation, which basically means that the treatment plant is probably treating mud during a stormwater event because, because of infiltration. So, a lot of these small things can save us money over time. And, and of course, he's going to make an argument not reducing the budget.
Okay, thanks for reading that, Kathy. So, now we'll go on to the next item, which is the approval of two point three eight percent increase, which is annually dollar amount of eight, eighty-three thousand four hundred and seventy-one dollars annually, for the operation and maintenance of Cascade Locks wastewater treatment plant and the lift station by CH two M Hill. So, I'll open it to comment.
This was one of his items.
This was one of the items that was on the?
He was concerned about the multi-year contract, he would like to have a year-to-year contract with a shorter termination, because he wants to keep his options open in terms of what, at eighty-three thousand dollars, we might be able to do a few other things instead of pay a contract.
He feels that there's a possibility that he can reduce those costs dramatically, and he's just barely gotten into off, into his position, so, and he's told Richard and I both that he feels that he can save a substantial amount of money once he gets in and gets, gets everything under control, and, and we might be able to save a considerable amount of, that amount of money that's going to, to them right now. Kevin?
Well, I remember signing the contract with these guys last year, so they're the ones that are proposing the change to a five-year contract, not necessarily something standard or?
And the financial increases of nineteen hundred dollars.
Tom?
Do we have any idea how much time they spend a year, actually?
I can find out, I don't know.
Roughly, or?
I've been told that roughly, he's only here two to three hours a day. He actually services three plants in the gorge area, and does that same thing. The only thing that they also do as part of that contract, they also have somebody who comes and hauls the sludge to Hood River. I don't know how often they haul the sludge, there's nobody here to tell me, but they haul the sludge to Hood River as well, so. It's, it's just a place where he really feels that he might be able to save the city more money by refining this and possibly doing some of this work in-house. Yes, Kevin?
Since he seems to be the expert on this, could we give him some leeway to negotiate a contract with these guys to bring to us to sign? I mean, it seems like that might be the right way to do it, since he?
He's much more knowledgeable at it than any of us.
And if he's given us advice, why not put the two parties directly together and see what they can work out? I mean, I agree with the points he's making, but for the?
Right.
Communication part of it seems like it would be a lot simpler if he contacted them directly.
And this is actually items C and D on the agenda, they show up separately, but they're really the same contract with two pieces.
Okay, so?
Yeah, that's my question, is amendments, they're, they're giving us these amendment fives, there's several amendments to them, I think somebody will go up, I don't want to just accept their amendments, in other words, give amendments to the contract.
Kevin?
I would move to table this pending, gosh, what's his name, the new?
Dave Griffin.
Mr. Griffin. Table this and direct Mr. Griffin to contact these folks directly.
Okay.
To try and work, work out a better agreement for us.
Okay, so, call for a consensus vote, then? All right, more discussion, go ahead.
I was wrong on my motion.
It was a motion?
I'll second it.
Oh, okay. It's a motion, it's been moved to seconded, sorry. It's been moved and seconded to direct Dave Griffin to get, be in direct contact, contact with CH two M Hill about this, our operation and maintenance of the Cascade Locks Water Treatment Plant contract.
So, he's, he's, I asked you a question.
Go ahead.
So he's, he's currently working for us, what, two, three days a week?
Yeah.
So, are we going to put a limit on, I mean, I'm just thinking, if, what if they don't get, then he's supposed to get into some long negotiation, or is he just making a couple phone calls to see what he can do? I just want a clarification.
No, Dave, he'll probably just make phone calls to, to find out how he can word it, and, and he knows these people, he's worked with these people in the past.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're not, not pulling him away from the few days that he is here doing Public Works.
It would probably be just a phone call to, to revise things, and then he'll go through it with Richard, yes?
So, I got, you said that CH two M goes to some other facilities, what facilities are they taking, what other facilities are they taking care of?
Gosh.
But apparently, apparently those people don't have the personnel, though, to take care of their facilities, though, either.
Right. Apparently.
So are they small facilities, big facilities, or?
I think one of them's smosher, but he's told me at one time, but I couldn't, I couldn't tell you for sure, because he just told me, I just kind of went in, and I didn't retain it, I apologize, I didn't think about that.
They go all over the United States, really.
Right, they go all over the United States, but from what I've been told, this particular gentleman who services Cascade Locks Sewer Plant also does?
That would be Doug Nichols.
Doug Ginkel.
Doug Nichols, Hood River, OMI, they handle like dozens of facilities all over the state, they're like the biggest.
Biggest in the world.
Yeah.
They're big. So. So.
Okay.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. I know that we take a five-minute break. Second, thank you.
You know, there's still a lot of, a lot of property.
Come on, sure.
It's counterintuitive to the tax, because it's like our boundaries are suspended on our boundaries. That's what, that's what, I disagree with that type of thing.
You know, that's what we should have had some power to, is just show us how.
Next on the agenda is approval of ordinance number four one two, proceeding general, prescribing general duties of the city administrator and repealing ordinance one fifty. Yeah, make sure you say it, Richard.
All this is really, it's what you've already done. We have to assign a new ordinance number to it, which is four twelve, so you've already packed on it otherwise.
Does anyone from the public have a comment? Seeing none, we'll go on to council. Is there any discussion?
Are we gonna, we have to make a motion first, right? Make a motion to approve ordinance number four twelve, an ordinance prescribing general duties of the city administrator and repealing ordinance number one fifty.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number four twelve.
Is it seconded?
Is it seconded?
Yes, it's moved and seconded.
It's squeaky.
Now we do a discussion.
Discussion, Kevin?
Um, it's, gosh, the process, is this, we're, weren't we gonna vote, don't we usually vote on the first reading, to accept the first reading as opposed to a motion? Isn't it how ordinances are adopted, or is it by motion?
I was gonna give that, and I think you, you can make the motion to do the first reading.
Okay.
And it was not out seven days ahead.
Okay. And we don't have seven, trust me, Richard.
Right, right. Start the first reading.
So, once the motion was currently on, to approve the ordinance was the motion.
Okay, so I'll restate the motion to approve the first reading of ordinance four twelve. And then you have to second it.
I will second that.
So, it's been moved and seconded to approve the first reading of ordinance number four twelve. I'll ask for discussion.
Um, section four, administration shall be appointed by mayor with the consent of the city council and shall serve as administrator until removed in accordance with the municipal charter of the city of Cascade Locks. What section of the charter does that refer to as far as, is that?
I think that's straight out of the other, the other ordinance.
Out of the other ordinance?
I believe so.
It is, and it was a change that I suggested, because our current charter actually gives different instructions about how city administrators appoint. So, if we were to pass this, it would be in conflict with our current charter.
Section twenty-one, there should be a city administrator who shall be appointed by and serve at the will, at the will of the city council. The city administrator shall be responsible to the city council for the proper administration of all affairs of the city of Cascade Locks and for carrying out policies established by the city council.
So, to continue, uh, I, I think it would be clearer if it, if it reflected what was in the charter. Shall be appointed by the council. Section four.
So, what would it say?
Well, right now, it does conflict with the charter, which says that the administrator shall be appointed.
Appointed by and serve at the will of the city council.
Does it say appointed?
The charter, the charter says there shall be a city administrator who shall be appointed by and serve at the will of the city council.
So, you wanna take out mayor with the consent of city council and put in the charter language?
It's the same thing.
It, it actually, without, without the.
With the consent.
Part of the sentence that says the mayor with the consent of, it would be the same as the charter. What this is saying is that the mayor, it's kind of like appointing a committee member, where the mayor appoints the person, and then the council either approves, consents to that person or refuses that person. The charter says the administrator will be appointed by the council, period.
So, you would take out the words with the consent of and replace it with the word and?
Uh, the minister shall be appointed by.
Shall be appointed with the.
The city council.
Mm-hmm.
So, just delete the mayor with the consent of.
Mm-hmm.
That's my suggestion, is it, I mean, is that it? Other?
Sounds okay.
Well, just, my suggestion would be, since we're actually referencing the municipal charter, that we just use the language straight from when you missed the charter. I'm not sure if that's, if we get to the same place doing it the way you suggested or suppose I'm following, but to me, the simple thing to do is to use the language that's in the charter, because if it's different than the language in the charter, the charter supersedes this anyway.
So, the charter says what?
It says there shall be a, there shall be a city administrator.
Who shall be appointed by and serve at the will of the city council.
Who shall be appointed by and serve at the will of the city council.
That's probably better.
And it goes on in the statement of the register.
I don't need you to know.
It, it does, um, the, the second whereas in the ordinance states that there shall be a city administrator.
It's just reciting section twenty-one.
Yeah, which wouldn't, we would be duplicating that under section four. It doesn't matter to me.
Is there any further discussion on the ordinance? So.
Do we need to modify the motion again then? Kathy?
Right.
Do we need? Do we need to?
Would he incorporate the changes into the first reading when he reads it, or, or do we need to? Why, I think we'd have to agree that those, that we wanna make those changes first, correct?
I think you can agree to make whatever changes we come back to the next meeting.
For a first reading?
Uh.
No, this is a first.
No, they, they can still have their first reading with whatever changes they have.
Yeah.
Whatever, whatever changes you're making.
But do we have to vote on changing? Does there have to be a consent of the council members to change, make the change?
Yeah.
And make it part of the first reading? Okay.
So, I need to reset?
So, there's a motion on the floor right now for the first reading. Do we need to withdraw that motion and make a motion to change this?
Who made the motion for first reading?
James.
That's my approval.
Withdrawn.
Do you want me to withdraw it or just re, just make the motion?
First reading with the change.
With, with the changes.
I vote that you withdraw it and then re, restate it.
Okay, so I'll withdraw, I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay.
You have to second it.
Seconded.
Okay, so I'll restate the motion, make a motion to have the first reading of ordinance four twelve, an ordinance prescribing general duties of the city administrator and repealing ordinance number one fifty with the change in section four to cross out the mayor with the consent of.
It's been moved and seconded to, um, the first reading of ordinance four twelve and to revise section four to reflect what the charter says. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, just to cross out the mayor with the consent.
Oh, just cross out mayor?
With the consent.
With the consent of.
With the consent of.
It just says the council.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, call for vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, motion passes.
Lance, wanna say why?
Um, are you asking me to say why?
If you want. If you don't, that's fine.
Yeah, I, I previously stated, I'll just say it again for record, removing the authority to hire a higher from the city administrator makes it a less desirable job. It impacts the role candidates that we get potentially when we're in those positions. It also takes the authority away from a professional strain, stand, so you can make those kind of decisions. It gives it to an elected board that is not familiar with day-to-day operations of the city.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is the approval of the reversal of transient room tax revenues from seventy percent general fund and thirty percent to the tourism to thirty percent to the general fund and seventy percent to tourism. Richard, do you have anything that you'd like to?
This was an item already discussed at one of the televised workshops, so I think it's just a, a public comment in your action.
Okay.
I sent him an email.
What?
Um, if, if we were to do this, we need to bring an ordinance back, because an ordinance ends an ordinance.
Okay.
So, you know, whenever this was told me, I wasn't thinking about it at the time to put this on the agenda. I didn't know that that is what you wanted, that that would be the proper way to change it.
Okay. Thanks, Kathy. At this time, I would ask the public if anyone in the public cares to comment. You're welcome to.
Is there any kind of presentation or?
It was discussed by the council at the last, at a workshop, so we've had some discussion on it.
We didn't discuss.
I bet you did.
No.
It was on the list to discuss, but then we adjourned.
Yeah, we haven't discussed it yet.
Okay.
George, why don't you went to the meeting, why don't you?
Back on the list and actually discuss it.
Make the presentation.
Um, well, I went to the meeting, actually, I don't, 'cause I asked for public comment first, so.
But they want a presentation.
I can give a staff, staff report. So, basically, I went to the tourism committee and, and I was there at their meeting when they discussed this, and, and basically, they were just, the tourism, tourism committee is just, they feel that they're doing good work with tourism and they wanna continue to do good work, and they just felt the need that they could do more if they had more money. And so, that's pretty much the consensus, is that they would just like to have more money to go towards tourism so that they could do more promoting, because they feel that they're doing a very good job and it's been a good return on the dollar. So, justifiably so, they, they voted and they made a recommendation to the council to look into this, and so, at this point, that's basically all I have to say, so I'll open it to public comment for those who would like to speak. Sandra?
I have a definite issue with how this recommendation was made at the tourism committee. It wasn't on the agenda, and the meeting was adjourned, and then the meeting was reconvened when this vote was taken. So, anybody who was watching the meeting didn't see it happen. It was like an afterthought, and one of the tourism committee members asked to change her vote after this because of the surprise way it was introduced, and that is, again, not being on the agenda and the meeting having already been adjourned before the vote was taken. And she wasn't allowed to do that, and I can see where, under normal circumstances, members of committees can't be allowed to change their vote, but when a vote is taken under these circumstances, I think it's entirely different. And without this committee member's vote, this would not have been a recommendation. It would have been three to three, so it would not have passed. So, I did wanna bring that to your attention, and public meetings laws require that notice be given on your, on what you intend to do. And basically, once you adjourned that meeting, that meeting was over, and in order to make another decision, I, I believe you would have had to re-advertise. And I can't think of any time in the history of, of this community where an action like this wouldn't be frowned upon, and I certainly do not approve of the way it happened, nor do I approve of this switch being made right now, although I wanna state for the record very clearly, I think there have been abuses to this fund by spending the money on things other than what it was intended for, and I can certainly understand why some of these abuses have rubbed individuals the wrong way. I think there should be reforms about how the money is spent, but to flip the seventy thirty right now at a time when our general fund is in a crisis, we're yet at the budget committee to get into the general fund, but I think we all know with the amount of debt that's gone to staff, not being serviced, and now we've decided to service this debt, and most of it either has to come out of the general fund or one of the subsidiaries, and I just don't see the money there to be able to do this. So, I would urge you, I think you have a very good letter that was submitted to you by Sandy Place, and I would appreciate it if somebody from the council would read that letter. I basically agree with her. I think there needs to be some kind of a marketing program before more money is asked for. I know there's a large balance in that account. I'm not saying that they couldn't use it. I'm not saying they wouldn't do a wonderful job with it. I'm just saying that this is not the time. Thank you.
Ben, but before you, could you just clarify your statement about where the abuses were coming from? I don't want it to sound like.
Oh, no, tourism, and I did not mean to say tourism had been misspending their money. They've been doing the very best they can with the thirty percent they get, and I suspect that they're not getting all they should, even of the thirty percent. I'm not sure about that. I can't say anything, but I think it needs to be looked into, but tourism has been expected to do a lot of things with that thirty percent that they're not really supposed to have to do with it. Things like beautification should be funded out of the general fund, I think according to state statutes and, and according to my opinion, and so, these are the types of abuses that, that I have been talking about, not abuses. I think, I think, I wanna commend you. I think you've done a wonderful job with your money. I think the flowers look great, et cetera, but that is the point of contention, the fact that you're having to spend your small thirty percent of the hundred percent collected for this reason towards other things, other. towards other things, other than, um, other than what this thirty percent was intended for, which is promoting our, our community. So, um, is that clear? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Rob?
Well, I don't believe it, but once I agree with Sandra, she's absolutely right. Uh, it's not the time nor the place to be changing that seventy thirty split. That money belongs in the general fund, it needs to be used for the general welfare of the community, needs to be used for public safety, that's the most important thing that the council provides for the city. Um, I do agree with her also, flowers look real nice. But if, for some reason, you feel it's necessary to move all that money over to, uh, tourism, where's the budget for tourism? What is it that they suddenly need? That's a huge amount of money. We're talking, we're talking, what, forty, fifty thousand dollars that you're going to suddenly put into tourism? For what? For what? You're going to cut police services so you can put forty or fifty thousand dollars into tourism? It's sure, it's a lot of flowers, a whole bunch of flowers. And there's other public safety things that come out of the, out of the general fund. It's, that, that money has been grandfathered in, which is just a, a really great thing. Why in the world would you want to give up a grandfathered, uh, thing on that, on that money? That's just insanity, thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, Sarah Knight, citizens of Cascade Lots, um, Mayor Fisher, council. You know, I have to say, I, I love living in America and participating in the democratic process. And I've never been able to do it at this level, so I'm excited. And as busy as I am, this issue of the transient room tax really caught my attention. Um, first of all, I also was curious why the council was considering reversing the split at this time. Um, it wasn't on the goals of things to do and yet it's been elevated and prioritizes council action. Secondly, I have some concerns that have prompted the following questions. How will tourism use the additional funds? Does tourism have a need that is prompting the council to reverse the current split? Then I want to know, what is the history of the transient room tax division? Why did previous councils decide to split the tax seventy thirty with the city, um, general fund receiving seventy percent? How much money are we talking about exactly? What will be the expected impact to the general fund? Did the administrator or the financial officer prepare staff report to inform council so they can make an informed decision? Could the reduction to the general fund result in cutting city services further or eliminating personnel, more positions? The city of Cascade Lots is among many cities in Oregon that have been grandfathered in to retain the seventy thirty split, favoring the general fund. Has the council looked at other cities who have elected not to take advantage of the grandfather clause and reverse the split? If any city exists that reversed the split, did they have a way to replace the lost revenue to their general funds? If the effects of reversing the TRT split results in a financial crisis for the city and services or personnel face cuts, can the council reinstate the seventy percent back to the general fund? My last question is, the decrease to the general fund will affect every member of this community. Would it not be in the best interest of the citizens if there was a town hall meeting, a workshop, where the facts and potential effects of this action could be discussed before the action, uh, before the council takes action? So your consideration of my concerns and request for additional information is greatly appreciated, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, can I, Brian?
Yeah, do you have that letter for Sandy, for Sandy, because that should be read into the public record?
Um, no, I don't. And she didn't request for it to be read into the public record. I, I never received that one.
I can tell you basically what it said.
Well, where's the copy of the letter?
It's in, it's in my email.
It's in my email?
Yeah.
Seems like that should have been something that should have been.
She didn't request it to be.
It still pertains to this, so it seems.
It does pertain, but she didn't request it to be spoken, is all I'm saying, Brian.
It pertains, so it should have been part of the packet.
She did request. Did she say, so somebody should read it, didn't she say that?
No.
Since it was, since it was essentially a public comment on this item, seems that it would have been applicable.
I don't know, I, I'd have to read it, so, go ahead.
You haven't read it.
I heard about it.
Well, anyway.
It's an email, it's a.
Hey, hold on, hold on, there's one person talking.
Go ahead.
Robert Lorraine, um, I am a business owner in this community and you'd think that I would be in favor of something that would increase advertising for tourism. We are a tourism-based business, but I don't support this. I don't support it because, um, I don't want to sound like a broken record, but where's the staff report? That's been my objection to the last month and a half, two months. There's been no staff reports, no research. We don't know what the impacts are to the general fund, we're talking forty to fifty thousand dollars. What will be the cuts that will be necessary? We already have a budget committee that is wondering how they're going to cover you. It's been repeated theme that this is a hard budget year and there are a lot of unknowns that haven't been resolved yet. To put a larger gap in the general fund budget, I don't think nobody, anybody has done the research on this. And to make this big of a change, which, as other people have mentioned, it's grandfathered in, once this change is made, it cannot be made, changed back. So this is a fifty thousand dollar hole that will remain. Um, I think it's irresponsible for the council to consider this. I, I, I do not like the way it was done, that it was brought up at a tourism committee meeting after it was adjourned, although the mayor was at the meeting the entire night, waited until the meeting had adjourned and the camera was off to bring it up, and actually brought it to the meeting and made the suggestion to make the switch. It was not tourism who brought that up.
That's not true.
So.
It's just, it's just one person talking at a time, right?
Yes, so, um, personally, I think that there are few people in this community that would support this idea. It's a difficult budget year and we have enough to deal with without making something that we don't know what the impacts will be. Also, I would like to see a marketing plan from tourism to see how this money will be used. As other people have mentioned, this is quite a lot of money. And, uh, I don't think anybody will be in favor of this, so, thank you.
Thank you. Donna?
Donna Moore, chairman, tourism committee. I have to agree with Sandra. I would like to say that it's very untrue that the mayor brought that to the meeting and presented it. He did remind me that I had forgot to bring it up and that's why we reconvened and did it. We would be more than happy to put it on our next agenda and vote for it, and we will do that. So then we'll settle that issue.
Okay.
Okay? It's interesting that sometimes people say there's no budget issue and then they stand up here and say that there is a budget issue. So tourism, you know, as far as working up a marketing plan, we need to know if we're talking a thousand dollars or, you know, this was just a recommendation by tourism. It was not a, council, we insist you give us our, you know, the seventy percent. For those of you who don't know, the state has already reversed this. The, it now goes tourism fund gets seventy percent, general fund gets thirty percent of any new business that comes in. So, the whole point of this, of tourism, is for tourist dollars. It's not to promote the general fund. And so, if you listened to Kayla earlier, tourism is the number three economic thing in Oregon, third. And we're trying to bring some of that to Cascade Lots. You all act like we have an agenda when all we did was ask for more money. I believe almost every fund asks for more, more, more money. There was nothing wrong in us asking for more money. You keep talking about all the money we have, well, let me tell you, you should research. Because in oh seven, oh eight, our beginning balance was seventy-five thousand, four hundred ninety-one dollars and eighty-nine cents. In oh eight, oh nine, our beginning balance was sixty-four thousand, eight hundred ninety-one dollars and fifty-seven cents. In oh nine, oh ten, our beginning balance was fifty-four thousand, six hundred fifty-six dollars and twenty-one cents.
Didn't you say that she was supposed to address the council?
I am. In ten.
She gave her, I, I wasn't sure, because she looked like she was talking to someone.
Well, there's people here, I'm sorry, I guess I can't ignore them. In ten, eleven.
I'm sorry, I was talking to the. Okay, yeah, just.
Okay, ten, eleven, forty-nine thousand, two hundred sixty-four dollars and ninety-six cents. Tourism fund is dropping by over ten thousand dollars a year. I calculated the figures and at this point, the beginning balance, next year will be around thirty-nine thousand. Now you talk about all this money we have, we're not wasting the money. We are promoting Cascade Lots. Fifty thousand brochures we've put out promoting Cascade Lots. That's not going in any of our pockets, that's promoting the town of Cascade Lots. The people who pay the TRT tax want it to be used to promote Cascade Lots, they want more business. That's the purpose of the TRT tax. Um, I'd like to read just really quickly. This, um, was a letter by someone who pays into the TRT tax and he gave some suggestions on ways that we can resolve this issue of the flowers and that, which is a contention, because even as a tourism committee, we don't believe the money should be spent on flowers. But the bottom line is, as Kayla said, going to that governor's conference, one of the number one things is make your city beautiful. If you want people to come here, make it beautiful. So, a couple of suggestions, number one, make a request to council, and this was written in two thousand nine, make a request to council that they create and fund a separate beautification fund to be managed by the tourism and beautification committee. This seems like the most appropriate way for the tourism and beautification committee to be able to accomplish both of its functions. Another one would be to propose a beautification tax to be collected from local businesses, probably not real popular, and before long, it would take five dollars to buy a dollar fifteen flowers because they're repaying the tax. So, there's a couple options that we could go instead, but the flowers definitely need to be done. When we proposed the seventy thirty, it was just a beginning spot. It was, in no way was it, you know, give us seventy and you take thirty. It was the beginning of our negotiation of what we would like to be done. And, um, I think that people keep talking about tourism and what's going on when you haven't even been to the meetings. I haven't seen a single one of anybody at our meetings. But they certainly want to complain a lot without coming in hearing it for themselves, so.
Thank you. Would anyone else from the public care to speak? Didn't you already speak, Lance?
Yeah, yeah, I speak again, only.
I guess, keep it brief.
I just want to say that, as a general rule, when a starting balance starts to go down, it's because that that fund's not being managed correctly. You know at the beginning of the year how much money's supposed to go into that fund and how much you have to work with, and if you keep working your balance, your starting balance down, there's something wrong there. And to allocate extra money, forty or fifty thousand dollars to a fund like that, seems to me to be irresponsible, thanks.
Is there any further public comment? Seeing none, we'll go to council comments. At this time, I move to table this issue until after another tourism meeting can be held and it can be dealt with in the proper manner. Lance, you have a comment?
Uh, just a question about that, um, is, does that mean it's going to be brought back as an action item or as a workshop item for discussion?
I don't know yet, depends on what the tourism committee decides. Because they're, they're just giving us recommendations.
Well, I guess it's, I mean, you're, you're, you're in charge of the agenda, so.
And I'm saying, I don't know, it depends on if the recommendation comes back. And so, it depends on what the recommendation is. So at that point, it's tabled until further notice. Okay, next up is, uh, mayor and council comments.
We have resolution one.
One, one, one?
It must be on that other page, I'm sorry, I get these two confused.
Oh, there it is. Discuss resolution of number one one four four.
This, this one may be an easy one, um, you know. The question was whether this particular resolution, year to year, required a cost load increase of three point six percent. That only occurred, uh, how the date on here, last time?
It's a terrible year, right?
Oh, eight, oh nine, okay. It has to be renewed every year if there's going to be a cost load increase, and it wasn't. So, I think it's a moot point, unless the council wants to act on it, I think, but so far you haven't done anything and so far there's nothing in the budget in terms of.
I thought there was something in the budget, I thought that you had.
I think it's, as opposed to a cost load, now, okay, I think it was merit, but in any case, you haven't approved it for this year, this fiscal year, and we haven't provided an increase, off look at the budget.
You said, according to your thing, you said that, uh, the proposed budget for eleven, twelve contains a three percent increase that is a combination of the cost of living and merit for all non-union, non-contract employees.
Yeah, and, okay, in the proposed budget, that the budget remains looking at, but in terms of the council action, this year, nothing has been.
There is no cost load.
And there, there would be a resolution prepared for that, if it was to happen. You would have to act on it, the resolution.
If the budget committee approved it.
Yes.
Okay.
Lance?
What's the discussion here that we don't need to discuss this, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Sounds like, kind of like, I'll just table it. Indefinitely.
Good discussion.
Okay. Now it's mayor and council, council comments. Any comments from the counselors? Like, or, um, Don?
Yeah, I would just like to suggest, I hear, we got, we got a lot of people that complain, but we don't seem to be getting too many people that get in line to, to help volunteer on any of the projects we have going on around town. And I would strongly recommend that, uh, if you really want to find out what's happening, volunteer and come out and help some of the people that are doing all these jobs. That's all I've got to say.
Any other comments? Tiffany?
I just want to, um, say I heard a couple times mentioned tonight, staff reports, and I do have to say that it's, um, I would say probably for the new counselors, it's a, a kind of difficult to come into a, a meeting without having to be able to prepare yourself with information. I, I know that there's probably a, a lot going on now with the budget and stuff, but, um, some of these items, I myself didn't even know why we had them on the agenda and I, I, I would like a little explanatory, um, statement as to why some of these things are, why they were on the agenda. And I would, you know, like to have some supporting information to, like, you know, like what the impact of the seventy thirty would have been, that would have been good information to have. And maybe even just the history of what Cascade Lots has done, because I'm sure, I'm not sure how much Eva knows. I'm sure Don probably knows more because his wife's been on tourism a lot, but it would be nice to see a history of where, what, where it is, why it is, and, you know, what the proposal is and, you know, what the pros and the cons are on that. Um, also, I think, um, for the library district, that one thing I forgot to, um, I would like to see from them, when you have the discussion and we probably need a consensus on this, uh, what that sixty, how much they're going to be getting in tax revenue from the city of. uh, what that sixty, how much they're going to be getting in tax revenue from the city of Cascade Lots, and what their intentions are, how they're, they intend to spend that money. I, I mean, just like we are asking other committees to show what their intentions are, I think we should know, um, what their intentions are, on how they plan on spending that money, so that, you know, the citizens can see what we're going to do with that money. So, I don't, do you want a consensus, we probably should get a consensus on that before we-
Take a consensus vote. All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
Opposed?
I'm, I'm sorry, in favor of getting a report from the, on library district-
On how much money-
On how they, how much money they expect to get, and how that's being expended for-
Exactly.
For our school.
So, are you for that, or against it?
Oh, I'm, I'm definitely in favor of that, I think it's-
Okay.
And then also-
So, the motion, or the consensus?
And then also, I would just like to tell Mary Ann, kudos for the bill's report, it's finally, finally shows all where all the bills are. I just have a few tweaks I understand left to go, but, I mean, it's, it's, it's much, much more itemized, not one lump sum sort of thing going on, so, we're making progress, hooray.
Okay. Lance?
Um, I had a comment, uh, I think some of us received a letter, um, the date was April twenty-nine. Uh, there was a letter from a man named Charlie Beck, who is the superintendent of Hood River County School District, and it's announcing the closure of Cascade Lots Middle School. And I just wanted to remind the community that when they closed the high school, they came to our gym, and, um, to, to a person, our representatives on the school board said, "We will not close the middle school." And now, the letter's saying, "We're committed to elementary education being here in Cascade Lots." And my concern is for, for the welfare of our children, uh, and their education, um, what is Hood River County School District doing to the children of Cascade Lots? Is there a plan here? And I understand, just in my experience as a, as a public school teacher, like George pointed out earlier, that the budgets are tight, the state school fund is short, um, and every school district is facing a deficit. But if you take the last five years and look at what that has meant to the children of Cascade Lots, compared to the children of the rest of Hood River County School District, I think you're going to see something that, uh, approaching criminal, in my mind at least. And I'm very disappointed to see this. I, I believe it spells, um, you know, potentially the end of our school here in Cascade Lots. As many people know, we don't technically, we technically have a representative on the school board, but she has indicated to me personally, and in, in public meetings in the past, that, um, that she has to balance the needs of her whole district, including her neighbors and her children, against the needs of Cascade Lots. And I'm really concerned that the school board is trying to balance their budget on the backs of families of Cascade Lots. And I know, you know, I, I think about that, and maybe I feel stronger now that I have a daughter, I, I was just imagining, if, if she was getting ready to go to the school, you know, I would be considering contacting an attorney, because this is ridic- I mean, showing me another school in the state of Oregon that has all the way from kindergarten through, uh, fifth grade, blended classrooms. Can, can someone on the school board do that? I don't think so, because it just doesn't happen. And out here, they're planning on not having a principal next year. And our, our kids get cold breakfasts. And I, I think it's important that everyone in the community where they have children is aware of what's happening in our schools. And, and ask the question, is it happening at the other schools in Hood River County School District? Because there, there were four cuts across the board, uh, in the, in the school district, and, um, you know, I think two of them came in Cascade Lots. And, and hopefully, the community can, um, can be, you know, can at least communicate that to the board, whether it's writing letters or, or showing up at board meetings. But, uh, very disappointing to see, um, another broken promise from Hood River County School District.
I, actually, I'd like to speak before he goes any further, because I'd like people to know, have a little insight, because I'm also the, the president of the charter school committee, and, and, uh, everyone thinks that this charter school is dead, and it is not. I went to the state last month, and they decided and voted against adopting, the state adopting us as a charter school, okay? I pointed out to them, I gave them an eight-page letter of probably forty violations that Hood River County had done over the period of our application for a charter school. Some of them were minor, some of them were, it just kind of proves the steps that they took, and it was repeated. And, so that you know, um, at this time, we are, we are, or I have already, last week, taken all that information into the state attorney general's office, and turned it into the state attorney general. So, they are currently looking at that right now. We are also currently looking into, uh, trying to get a lawyer who's good with civil cases in schools, because we feel that we have a very strong civil case against Hood River County School District for those same issues that you just brought up, Lance, just so you know. So, um, at this same time, um, Charles Beck has said that, that now he, he wants to work with us. So, um, we are extending more avenues as far as the charter school goes. We've hired another person to come in to try to do the curriculum work, to try to mop up or fill in the pieces, to try to get it to be something that supposedly Charlie will accept. So, um, we're not dead yet. It's unfortunate that we have to go to this, to this point. I've repeatedly tried to work with the school district and asked them for their help, to try to get them to work with us. So, I just kind of wanted everybody to know that we're still working towards that goal, it hasn't, it hasn't came to an end, so.
Lance, you had another comment?
Just follow up on that?
Yeah.
Thanks. Um, I did want to say, just so, just to make myself clear, um, the teachers at Cascade Lots School are, are incredible teachers, and, uh, they do a lot, uh, perhaps more than other teachers in the district with, with less resources. Um, so I didn't mean to suggest by any means that, that there's a problem with the teachers, but decisions that are coming down from, um, uh, from higher up are impacting our children. And I, I think it's a great development that, that civil attorneys are being contacted, and sometimes that's what it takes to, to get some movement, um, on the part, on the part of the, um, the higher ups. But I certainly think that, that families that are negatively, negatively impacted by these decisions, you know, should consider any and all of their options, and not just accept two hours on the school bus every day.
Thanks, Lance. Yes.
I can tell you exactly what they're, the, the decisions have been made about the faculties. And, and by the way, I, I'm there a lot. What the kids are getting in education this year is tremendous. The middle school has two wonderful teachers that are taking care of free grades. Uh, one of them's had, one of them's being cut, well, transferred to Hood River. I worked hard to try to influence to keep the sixth grade at least, because sixth graders don't belong on a bus going to a school that has a whole bunch of kids, and they're not used to a big group like that, they're not ready for that sort of thing. And we are going to keep our sixth grade. It's a promise of one year. We're losing the one teacher at the middle school level. We're, the PE teacher is a half-time, he's being cut to two-tenths, and they offered the job to a different PE teacher from Hood River. The only thing I don't know is, is, uh, the music, but I know he's being cut. We're losing a janitor. And we're losing a principal half-time, principal, we won't have a principal. Somebody in Hood River's going to be checking on us, and there'll be probably one teacher to do kind of an in-school thing, while they're teaching full-time at the classroom.
They're kind of special on reading, too.
Oh, yes, they are. This special ed is offered half-time. The teacher doesn't know what to do, because she lives a long way, she's been offered, she could go to Hood River, but that's means four hours driving a day. So, that's the situation we're in, we're being decimated a lot. We will keep K through five, A through six. Double classes, double, two grades for one teacher all the way through.
Okay.
I do understand that the, Hood River did cut back their ski team, I think their, their five-OS trips to the mountain issue.
That, that came out later, something?
I think so.
La- last time this came down, the, the city council contemplated sending a letter to the school board. And I wonder if that's something we would think about.
Yes, Don?
This is, this is one of the reasons I felt we shouldn't sign a contract with the library. I don't personally trust what they're doing to this town. And this started, I graduated in nineteen fifty-one, and it started in the fifties. They've been talking about it, when we had a pretty good-sized school. This has been on the agenda for a long time. And I don't, I don't trust them, I don't even trust them with a signed contract.
Tiffany? I just wonder if we should, um, expand on that, and just, by consensus vote on, on sending a letter? I mean, I, we all know that it probably's not going to make much of an impact, but we can at least say we, we did.
I'll take a consensus that the council, uh, work up a letter to send to the Hood River County School Board, and Charlie Beck, that, uh, we strongly hope that they would support us in, a charter school, or strongly support us to maintain or, or, or give us a guarantee that we will always have an elementary school here? How, how do we want to, there's, there's a lot of different options.
John has something?
Oh, yes.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Council, you know, I went to the meeting last Thursday night, which, which, which was conversation with Charlie, and he was here, and you're right, um, um, Bobby Walker was there and announced that we're closer to a charter school than they ever have been at this point in time, and that it was just a scope and sequence that was hanging up the, the argument between the school district and the charter committee. Well, one of the things Charlie talked about to the community was, the bus runs both ways, and he refreshingly said, "Make your school a target school. Let people drive from Stevenson and from Carson, or, or, and from Corbin, and bring their children to your school, because it's such a great school." And he made that challenge to the people that were there at that meeting, and to the teachers, and he commended the teachers, that this is a great school, but make it such a great school that people bring their children to this school. And that was so refreshing to hear, because that was one of the arguments that we had about transportating, transporting kids from Hood River to our high school, and keeping our high school viable, before that, that decision was made. So, my suggestion is to the council, to maybe have, ask Charlie to come to the council meeting and say, "We want to make our school the best in the state, so help us do that," and challenge him to help us.
I just wanted to expand on Don's comment a minute ago on trust. When I came here fifteen years ago, we had a representative on the school board, and it was shortly after we lost that representative, I believe around two thousand was the year, that, that they started pushing on closing down the high school, which they did, and then the middle school. And part of this seems to have come out of our not having any representation, uh, up at the county. We don't have anybody, we don't, we have a person that represents West Seattle, uh, Seattle, West Hood River, and also our town here. We don't have any direct representation, either on, either on the county commission or on the school board. And in, until we do, until that changes, we're going to, we're going to constantly be at the mercy of those people up there. And I'm not sure just how that changes, but something needs to be done about it, so that, so that we do get a vote. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion, oh, Don?
I just think, you know, one idea might be to send a letter just simply stating that you strongly oppose the cuts that are being made at Cascade Lots.
So, I'd entertain a motion from any of the council members, or-
I just need a consensus.
Ten cent?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So-
Who, who's going to write the letter? One, me, or you?
You don't want me to write the letter, there'll be too much venom in the ink.
I wrote the last one. I mean-
Do you want to write the-
Different council, I, it's a different cut, but- What's that? Well, it's, I, I feel like it would be from the council.
Yeah, it would be from the council, so. You want to do it again, Lance?
What's my time on?
One hour.
Couple, three days, I don't know how much time you need, Lance. That's more, more equitable.
Um, try to get it to Mr. Carson to be distributed to the RCU-
Sure.
By the end of this week, is that fair?
Yeah.
Or the- And then I have one more thing I wanted to bring up, since the, um, Mr. Lor- uh, Lorang is here, I thought maybe that, um, we have a city services committee, but I'm not- Lorang, Brad, did you set an itinerary, did you state what the purpose of that board was for the, the city services committee? Did you ever define what that was?
Um, I'm not sure, Kathy, uh, we, it never did, uh-
Not because we didn't have anybody that volunteered.
Yeah. Okay.
Enough people interested in it to make a call for any-
Okay, so, maybe that can be a workshop discussion on that, because we have, now we have people there, and they're chomping at the bit to do something, and we don't know what they need to do, so.
There, and just, I, I remember there was kind of a struggle to-
To define-
To define what it was.
What it is, exactly.
And I would, I would point, um, you know, Rich and maybe Kathy back to the minutes, um, I believe it comes from, in January, February of oh nine, where the subcommittee on committees made a report, and then, and then later council had a discussion about committees, and that's where the idea for a, a whole city services, um, committee, uh, that's, that's where that discussion came from, or that idea came from. So, at least it's a point of reference, if we were to come back to, maybe a staff report.
Yeah.
Okay. So, with that being said, we'll end council comments and move to, uh, staff notes. Richard?
Don't have any?
Don't have any, Kathy?
I just want to remind everybody of the ethics training on Friday. So, if, um, anybody would like to go to that, I really would like you to call, break the mask, like, and have them. And we have, right now, we have about seventeen people going between us and the board.
Okay. And that's available to anybody, yeah?
Okay.
Anybody that doesn't have to work, anything?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's at ten o'clock, my friend.
Mary Ann, did you have anything you wanted to? So, that, that's the end of, uh, staff notes, and we will move into televised workshop session, and, uh-
I'd like to not do the council rules and maybe go to the Cascade Meadows thing, is that something that-
Actually, under council rules, I just want to bring up one thing, and I'll make it quick. And I'll make it quick. It's, it was brought to my attention the last meet, or the last meeting before that. And there is no set rules for when there's a vacancy on a committee. And I read today, Richard pointed it out to me that it is between the city administrator and the mayor to establish rules for filling vacancies or for establishing committees. And I want to make it a written rule that there'll be a notification sent out for two weeks to fill any committee vacancies. And I'd like to take a consensus vote of the council. All those in favor, or do you have a discussion?
Are we making a change to, I was looking at page eleven, twelve of council rules. Are we making a change to that or?
No, I'm just saying that there should be, it should be written that, that if there was a vacancy on a committee, that it has to be publicly advertised for two weeks before that position can be filled. And according to the rules, it says it's between the administrator and myself, but I want it to be in writing in the rules that, that that's, is stated that way.
If you agree, then I would bring it back with a staff report and a resolution to change the council procedures.
So you're talking about on page eleven?
Yes.
Section ten point one C.
Yes.
Where it says filling vacancies is conducted in accordance with procedure established by the two of you.
We would add something in there about a two week public.
What the procedure is.
Right.
That there's a two week public notice to fill vacancies on committees. Is there any discussion?
I would just say that is, I mean, I guess it's, there's potential that there might be a need because the committee has had too many resignations and there's business to be done. There might be a time where you'd need to make those appointments in less than two weeks. So, I mean, an emergency clause would take care of that, but again, not going to be brought back as a, as a discussion or a resolution, so. Just for, just for consideration.
Yeah. Okay, so I call for a consensus vote. All those in favor?
Hi.
All those opposed? So, discussion of the memorandum of the understanding between the city of Cascade Locks and Cascade Meadows.
And again, this is one of those things we don't have. We just have a memo on, so.
It's, that's because I just wanted to bring you up to date. We're still negotiating the memorandum of understanding kind of back and forth between the housing authority and us. I mean, it, it, it's moving forward, but I'll, I'll be during the, I would imagine I can bring a draft. I'll look back for your action probably at the next meeting. But we are, we are still in negotiations with it.
Did you have the figures in here?
Yeah, no, I don't.
Oh, you didn't?
I can tell you verbally what we're talking about. We had a sixty-one thousand five hundred dollar obligation to the housing authority. One way to, to deal with that would be to do three things. One would be to provide labor and equipment through the electric utility to bring electricity. It would be worth about twenty-six thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. And we can talk about how that's paid for. We could do, use a S D C credit for the off-site eight inch water line, which would be about eleven thousand three hundred and ten. And they want to lease land from us that's adjacent to the site, both for construction trailers and for stockpiling topsoil. So they don't have to haul it at a, at a distance with trucks. And that would be for twenty-three thousand two hundred and seventy dollars. So that totals the sixty-one five. So that's kind of the current state of our negotiations.
Sandra?
Should I get up to ask a question or?
Sure, if you want.
I kind of heard something about this before, but I, I have some real questions. How can we use the S D Cs for this reason? I mean, either this is something that Ruby Mason owes, would normally be paid for by Ruby Mason, or it's something that would normally be paid for by our S D Cs.
Right.
And if it's something that would normally be paid for by our S D Cs, we can't charge Ruby Mason for that. We're obligated to give her sixty-one thousand five hundred dollars worth of our services.
We're not charging her. What we're doing is, first of all, we, we've assessed S D Cs for water, sewer and parks against their project according to the S D C schedule. You can give somebody, a developer, a credit on certain S D Cs if they're making off-site improvements that benefit the city. In this case, they're bringing in an eight inch line off-site. So they're not, this isn't anything to do with on-site. So they get a credit only against the water S D C, not against sewer, not against parks. But only because the off-site work they're doing that we're not doing. They're doing it for us essentially.
So this would be off-site work that would normally be ha, paid for by S D Cs, correct?
That we would do.
That we would do. And so we're forgiving her S D C.
On just that one item.
On just that one item. So that makes sense. Okay. So the other question is, you say, how much was left that the electrical company is going to perform?
The electric company, the city life basically said that it would take twenty-six thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars to bring in power to the thirteen units on, on-site.
Right. And we have to determine some way, of course, cover that and not leave our electrical company paying for that, correct?
Correct.
And so that's twenty-six thousand and eleven thousand for the S D Cs and.
Then there was a, then there's a land lease for property the city owns, but like, right next to the project, where they put a construction trailer and move topsoil to store it instead of putting it in trucks and taking it at a distance.
And the amount for that is?
Twenty-three two seventy.
Oh, wow. And she's agreed to this?
Yeah. Well, it's like, you know, they would, they would be using that property for storage, construction trailer and all that for probably almost a year.
See, it saves the contractor a lot of money just from the simple standpoint. They're going to be digging a lot of dirt.
This is the same property that she just steed it back to us, correct?
Hmm, part, part of it. Part of it. And then the rest of it's the park area.
Okay. Well, I appreciate the fact that you're trying to save the city money, but I, I do have question about, about charging her that much for, you know, for rent on the property. It seems that we put Ruby Mason, myself included, through quite a bit and that we should be bending over backwards to help her with things. And this isn't money out of our pockets, so to speak.
She asked us for the use of the land. It was.
She did. And so she expected, this is a statement of her contract. She was expected to.
Her contractor actually did because it saves him money. He'll actually probably end up making money more than what that.
Otherwise, they would have to take dump trucks
Right.
to move the soil to a remote site.
Right.
Whereas now they don't have to. They can just, they can just ride it all in.
They can just pile it and then haul, haul it once. And that saves them quite a bit of money.
Right.
So that totally makes sense. The only thing I was concerned about is the S D C, the S D Cs. But if we're giving her credit because she's paying for line extensions that our S D Cs would normally cover, then that's all fair.
And she agreed to the land lease price, so.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
And these lines are all outside of her property?
Yes. It's an aid and order made off-site. She's paying for everything off-site. Well, it's up to the power, but we're, that's part of the agreement.
Any other further discussion or questions, Tiffany?
And so are we, we're discussing how some of that is going to be paid for.
I'm just giving you, I'm just giving you an update and I'll probably bring the next, the M O U with these dollars in it back to you for your discussion with the next, probably the next council meeting.
Okay. With that being it, we'll end that and we'll go on to the city administrator recruitment process.
Okay. I gave you a one-page sheet. One of the things you hired me for was to replace myself, which is, no, I won't go there. So anyway, I've laid out, starting today, if you're okay with this process I have, I will start the recruitment. We'll be putting stuff on our web. We'll work with the League of Oregon Cities, the International City Manager, City County Manager Association. We'll have a, we will have to appoint a recruitment committee to screen folks, then set up a community meeting so they can come in and talk to folks in the community. And that has got, there's, it's got the timeline in there, so. Yes. I'm sorry, you're supposed to do that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking at my deal. Lance, go ahead.
Okay. I guess my, I wasn't sure what the, where, where in this process the or if there's a place in this process where the council conducts interviews. Is that not? I mean, I just, I looked at selection committee. I wasn't sure. I mean, there's.
Well, I think that's, we haven't got there yet, but I think that's going to be up to the council. Do you want to be the, the selection committee? Do you want to appoint somebody to it? So I'm just, I, I just put, put down generically as a selection committee. We'll, I'll come back to you. It's part of the process and ask who, how you want to do that. But there will be a selection committee and they will go through the applications and the resumes and they will interview the individuals. And they will make a recommendation to the council. Now, if you want to be the committee, then you're a committee.
And what is the timeline?
It's in the back here.
I, I didn't, I went through it. I didn't see it.
I guess what I was getting at in person is I, I mean, I, I think you can, you can expedite things when a smaller group.
I think.
To, to, to do that, but I think that it's an important opposition and as the city charter says, the council points to the city administrator. So, I mean, I guess you can have someone, a, a smaller group just tell, just make that recommendation. It seems to me that the interview process, I mean, that's how we did it for interim position. I think that's general house. But then passes if the council looks at, at least, you know, the top candidates.
Yeah, it ends up, like you said, I, I just put selection committee here as a placeholder. Who you want to do that is up to you. If you want to make that a subject of the council, that'd be good.
Which we had this discussion before. It has to be five or seven. Doesn't it, Kathy? We just had this discussion because when we did the interim thing, something in our council procedure said, I think it had to be five or seven people on the committee. So it has to be at least five, I think, if I remember correctly.
I'll check the procedures and see what's.
I mean, we had a, we had a memo in Georgia trailer saying, you know, detailing what their competition was. It's definitely in, probably, uh, February or January package.
And I'll bring this, I'll, I'll bring the schedule back to you every council meeting just to keep, keep you updated and get, if I have any questions for you.
But the, it says here that determine selection committee is on May ninth. I think that's today. Couple more hours.
True. Let me check the procedures in terms of what you were talking about and see if I can, you know. The main thing is just, I need, you know, you need the approval to kick it off and get us, get the clock started. We can do the selection committee's discussion.
Well, are we also deciding the total compensation?
Right now, what we're budgeting, and that's kind of hard. We'll work through the budget. Budgeting that's what it was before, sixty-five to seventy thousand.
But I mean, I guess what I'm trying to, are you asking us to approve that, approve this whole process that you've laid out and determine the selection committee or postpone the selection committee? Is that what you're asking for?
I think you're okay on the selection committee.
I said determined. That's why I'm just looking at the language.
No, but we're in a workshop, so we can't really.
Yeah, I understand that, Tiffany. I guess what I'm saying is I'm looking at those first three items. And when you see the word determine, when is that supposed to happen and how? That's my question.
Well, I would be good if, I don't know if you can take it, you can't take any action in a workshop, I don't know.
Just discussion.
All right, well.
You can have a consensus.
Okay. Then the, what I would look for is a consensus on the compensation to approve the recruitment process we can put up determining the selection committee. Now, that one's, that comes towards the end anyway. The main thing is I just want to start the clock and get a hold of League of Oregon Cities and get, get the website started.
Okay. I'll call for a consensus vote to direct Richard to determine the total compensation for the city administrator.
And start the process?
To start the process. All those in favor? Oh, Kevin?
What was, what was the proposed budget amount?
Seventy thousand.
Seven thousand salaries and?
Insurance.
I think it's seventy thousand salary without.
Without benefits.
Without benefits. Which is actually, I think, well, well, just leave it there for now. That's what we talked about. That's what the, the last recruitment I looked at was, was that. And that's, and I haven't looked at compensation for city administrators for cities under five thousand in Oregon. That was right, right, kind of in the middle, so it was a pretty good price.
Okay. Call for vote?
Or consensus.
Or consensus? Yeah, I'm sorry. Call for consensus. All those in favor? All those opposed? Any consensus?
The next item is S D Cs. I'm going to go a little bit more time to talk to the new public district superintendent about this and then talk to the consultant. Wasn't along as far as I wanted to be, you know, because I don't have any numbers yet. I have a outline of a contract, so that would be okay to.
Table this?
Yeah.
Okay. I move that we table the S D Cs until Richard's had time to contact David and go through this with the engineer. Okay.
Last item. Regarding discussion of ordinance three twenty, it came to my attention that the, what the city's requirements and the state's requirements for collecting transit lodging taxes are different. You have an exemption in the code for a person who rents a private home, vacation cabin or similar facility from an owner who personally rents a facility incidentally to the owner's personal use. And I have no idea what that part, the ending part really means. Whereas the state basically says that you collect transit lodging taxes on houses or portions of any of these dwelling units that you use for temporary human occupancy. So the state basically says, like, let's say Sun River, or if you go to the coast, you rent a house, you pay a lodging tax. You don't collect it here. So I just wanted to point that out.
Discussion? Don?
I, I think if someone has a house and if they're in the business of renting it as to tourists, not on a monthly basis, I think they should pay it. They're competing with the motels. That's my. Yeah.
I, I feel the same way as Don. I, I feel that if, if they're doing it for a business and they're renting it and making money out of it and they're not having to pay T R T tax, that the, the city's losing out on that revenue. I think that, I feel that we should make our ordinance be in line with the state so that we can receive that tax. Tiffany?
Does this also include bed, does our ordinance include bed and breakfasts? Is that considered a hotel?
I don't really know. They have true.
I think bed and breakfasts are exempt from that. Isn't that what am I?
Oh, I can that.
Or they're not.
I don't think they're, no, bed and breakfasts aren't exempt, but they're not specifically called out in well, it's not, let's put it this way, it's not an exemption under, under the city, the city's code.
Right, but is it a?
Yeah, I'd have to pull the full, full. I think it is, yeah. I think it is included in terms of the state. But I'd have to pull the, all of them back up.
Can we check that?
Yeah. I mean, you could put this, basically put this on for action item or a workshop or whatever and I could get all that information. or whatever, and I can get all that information in the staff report.
More work, I'm sorry, it just makes things more, it just makes things more cookie, so.
Any other discussion from the council? Tom?
I just agree also that, because I think potentially we're, I was getting ahead of the curve here a little bit, I think that type of rental has, has the chance of growing here.
Yeah.
But you look at, you look, you look at Hood River, there's, there's houses that are built up there on Hood River, they're built not for people to live in, they're homes being built as vacation rentals, and that's, so it's, and there's limited space in the gorge to be able to, to be able to do that. And I, I think, I think you can see it a growing, a growing thing, I think, and I believe it starts to seem more of that after we're at Cascade Locks, so, yeah, we should be in that range.
And I know some of the sailing events, they've already booked houses here already.
Lance?
Um, just to clarify, you're saying that the state law does not require that those be collected?
No, the state law does not exempt them, and, and includes them in the tax, whereas we exempt them.
So does, does that mean that there's a conflict between what the state law says and what we're doing? Or is the, is the state law ambiguous as to what we should do, what, what we are required?
I think, I think the state law is clear as to what you can collect the tax on and what is exempt, and, and we have created.
What you can collect it on, okay.
Right.
Those optional.
Because they start with houses. So anyway, I, I don't think you're necessarily legally in conflict with the state, but you certainly have the option of collecting on those kind of facilities, and a lot of cities do.
Thank you.
Ken?
You know, in reading this, section five, subsection three, the incidental, incidentally to the owner's personal use, I think it's just, it's poorly worded, but I think the intent was that where your personal residence, not a second house that you happen to own in town right now, this, this, I, I mean, that's the way I would interpret that, incidentally to the owner's personal use. So your own personal residence, as opposed to owning four or five residences and renting them out, I, I mean, I guess would probably, probably take a attorney bill to really nail it down, but I believe that those are already covered, because at the beginning of this ordinance, it, it specifically says that houses, basically anything rented for human occupancy less than twenty-nine days, or twenty-nine days or less, is covered by TRT.
Correct. So, yeah, I.
And this seems to be a little wiggle room for if it's your own personal residence and you rent it to a friend, or you collect some money from a friend who stays there on the weekend when you're gone.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty soft language, just because you could argue that if you stored something in the attic, it was incidental to your personal use.
And I, yeah, I.
And you rented it out all the time, so I, you know, I have no idea what it means. I think it'd be a good idea to clarify.
Okay, so, with that being said, do we wanna direct Richard into?
Cleaning it up?
Huh?
Cleaning it up?
Cleaning it up and then bringing it in as an action item at the next meeting?
Sure.
All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been amended and seconded to adjourn, we adjourn.
Don't even need a vote, now we wanna go home.